All right, we'll go ahead and call our work session to order, joint work session. Welcome, everybody. And for our council members, I'll just start off with the review of this evening's agenda and pause for any questions or clarifications for staff before we get into it tonight. And first, all right, at the beginning, Jeff, we got a proclamation for 2024 Arbor Month proclamation. We'll get into public comment. We had anybody either online or in person submit anything yet?
No mayor.
All right, thank you. I will then get into the consented vendor, which has our city council meeting minutes from March 18th. Resolution 2024-07, tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for sewer projects. As well as Resolution 2024-10, which is tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for water projects, two different things. At our new business, we have an ordinance for the adoption of economic opportunity analysis. As well as ordinance 2024-03, adoption of the housing capacity analysis. At the end, we'll do a report from our city manager and we'll do our committee and council reports. Just a reminder to council, we have a last second edition of the agenda, which is an executive session at the end of our meeting this evening. With that, let's get into this work session. Jeff, I'm just gonna let you manually do the role.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, and with that, let's get to the work session here. Thank you to planning commission members for joining us. We will be discussing the comprehensive plan, the block three draft goals and policies. We have some guests here. Tyler, if you want to kind of kick us off, get us going.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as you know, we've been working on comprehensive plan update for two years now. It seems like it's, I don't want to say the never ending project, but definitely a very lengthy project. And tonight we have Annie East. Matt Head, I should know that by now, too. Here with us from 3J to discuss block three goals and policies. I don't want to take up too much of my time with an intro because there's lots to dive into, so I'll just turn it over to Annie East and let you
Great.
Jump into it.
Awesome. Excellent. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Can all folks online see this? Great. Excellent. Thank you so much, Annie East-Matte from 3J Consulting. I'm glad to be back here. I think the last time I was here for the cop plan specifically was actually back in August. So as you all know, there's been a lot going on between August and today in terms of the technical reports like your HCA, your EOA, which were very important in informing the goals and policies for block three. See if my, there we go. One second while I just navigate some things on my screen here. Um, quick update on the schedule. I just updated the schedule to just better reflect actually where we are in the process. We are nearing the end of a very long, long process. This is the last block of goals and policies to review as at a joint planning commission and city council work session. Before we head into the development of the actual document and then go into adoption proceedings, which should start in the spring and go through the summer. Okay, so very quickly, obviously, the comprehensive plan is due for new look. We're working very hard on making it look like a very nice, attractive document. It's going to incorporate almost all of the elements you have already seen and reviewed. Including the goals and policies from previous docu, from previous blocks, as well as a summary of all of the engagement and the outreach that went throughout the visioning and comprehensive plan work. I know staff is also working on some elements of the cop plan, like a historical timeline and some other nice additions to the document, but I think is really going to give this policy document a major facelift. And then in terms of just a reminder of the hierarchy of content, so we started with a really broad, wide community vision statement. Just a reminder, over a thousand people engaged in that process over about a year and a half. From that, we established goals and then we established policies. And then some of the elements do have implementation strategies or action plan items that are associated with certain policies. Most of those actually came out of that workshop that we did for natural hazards. Where we had a lot of cross-sector action items and strategies that were developed with a wide variety of folks and Sandy. The updated cop plan will probably, probably be a lot more readable. We're working around six vision themes instead of statewide planning goals, even though all statewide planning goals fit in the vision themes. We're averaging about two to five goals per vision theme, and then we have anywhere from about four to 10 policies per goal. And then our implementation strategies or that work plan will be a separate appendix item. Since it is more of an action oriented document. Okay, reminder of the block, or the block content. So this is block three and we're covering housing, economy, governance and growth management. This covers goal nine, goal 10, goal 14, as well as goal two, when he's planning, and then also incorporates a bit of goal one, citizen involvement. And then also just a reminder, too, that we have kind of a iterative process all of these blocks. So you all had a chance to review that preliminary draft of the goals and policies for this block. We took your comments, we made revisions to that document, we put it out to our CAC. We had our economic development committee review it and revise it. So there's lots of other, and city departments as well were able to review it. And so what we're coming back to tonight is with is an updated version of those block three goals and policies. You will see it one more time in the adoption proceedings, but this is kind of to help close the loop on your feedback. Okay, I'll just move into the block three goals and policies, governance and growth management. Um, so just a reminder, this certainly, this work was certainly not created in a vacuum. There was a number of inputs and supporting plans and efforts that went into drafting the concepts here. Not only from your input, but also the visioning work in general, established the broad vision statement for this, these topic areas. Your 2024 housing capacity analysis report, which we'll be speaking about later this evening. The 2024 economic opportunities analysis report, your 2023 economic development strategic plan. We looked back at your current comprehensive plan to understand what was there before. City staff input, your review as a planning commission and a city council, our CAC, and then also outreach to the economic development committee. I just included the vision statement here as a refresher on exactly what it, what it states. So for this block, we say that in 2050, Sandy is home to desirable neighborhoods and a strong workforce. Thriving commercial and industrial districts provide balanced employment opportunities at all levels. A variety of businesses meet the daily needs of residents and contribute to Sandy's sense of place. A strong tourism industry provides opportunities for businesses and supports the local economy. Sandy's workers have access to a variety of housing choices that allow residents to move in, move up or age in place. Ensuring families can live, work and thrive in Sandy across multiple generations. Balanced housing choices contribute to safe, walkable, family-friendly neighborhoods that connect residents to nearby parks, trails, businesses and key destinations. That was reviewed, vetted and developed essentially by lots and lots of community members over the course of about a year and a half. Okay, so theme one. So within the block, we have multiple themes. The first is urbanization. So obviously, I didn't want to include all of the text of the document in the slide because I know that you have it in front of you. So I just included the main goals that the policies are organized around, and then I'll kind of talk through some of the key revisions that we made. So goal one, engaging in good governance by coordinating with local, regional, statewide agencies and partners to provide services commensurate with, measure it with urban growth, excuse me. So yeah, this is, this is obviously kind of emphasizing partnerships and relationships. It's about evaluate periodically evaluating the city's 20-year land supply. Facilitating development. There was a comment I know from Council Walker about the use of high density zones, and we just didn't want to include high versus low density zones, knowing that that sort of development happens in all zones, not necessarily.
So the infield can happen in all zones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So just wanted to clarify that. There was also some comments about considering the needs of parks in the UGR, and I just wanted to make a note that that is actually block one. I think we'd have a policy covered.
Policy 1.7 says, consider the needs of parks and open spaces and natural hazards, blah, blah, blah. When evaluating the capacity of Sandy's UGB, and I just asked if we could add NUGR. Just because.
Yeah.
You know, the UGB is not very big outside the city limits. And is it possible to add the NUGR on that?
Yeah, I think that kind of begs the question as to what the city's role is in managing land outside the UGB.
Well, we already have areas like that.
Right.
Sandy River Park and all that, and so we've already been there and done that.
Yeah, I would also, I would agree with you too, though, it's just given the fact that we're also speaking about wildfire flooding risks, which transcend the boundaries like UGBs and UGRs, that I would, yeah, consider adding that.
Well, the reason I want to do is because again, looking at, you know, future parks, community parks, you know, that we can afford to buy now and landbank them, you're looking outside the UGB and within the UGR. So that's why I wanted to just add NUGR.
Okay.
If at all possible.
Yeah, I actually don't think Sandy River Park's actually in the UGR. But it is in the UGB. So maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought we included it.
I don't know. I think it's a fine addition, and I think it's a good suggestion. I will say, just so you're all aware. The UGRs, there's not very many in the state, and it sounds like based on recent work I've done with UGB expansions, which I've done two of them. The UGR, they didn't, it didn't even matter. They had me evaluate beyond it. I just wanted to let you know. But we can certainly add it.
Yeah, just. Okay. And then any other edits? We basically identified some other government agencies and some of the policies. And then we also streamlined some of the language and detail. We just wanted the the statements to be clear and concise, or as clear and concise as possible. Do we have any questions about kind of that first subset of, of goals and policies?
On two?
Yes, and two, yeah.
On number 2.4, pursue cooperative agreements with other government agencies to facilitate the implementation of blah, blah, to jointly to jointly cooperate, plan, finance, construct and administrative related projects. What does that mean? Is that infrastructure stuff?
Um, so that actually reflects the cooperative agreement that the city of Sandy had for the green the green corridor with ODOT and what else? Was it Multnomah County as well?
Like Clackenoma? I think it's Clackamas County, Multnomah County. ODOT. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so I think basically what it is is highlighting the importance of partnerships. Like this example, when you were trying to fund, finance and construct any projects that speak directly to a comprehensive plan. And so the green corridor was an example that it was referenced in the cop plan, and thus that partnership could exist.
So it's not funding our infrastructure necessarily? Our sort of treatment plan, more of a treatment.
No, that was not the intent of this policy. Yeah.
Question on 1.6. When it's this special provision for prior to annexation of areas greater than 20 acres.
Yeah.
We, 20 acres is kind of the minimum parcel size outside of our area, so when we say over 20, do we want to say over or equal to 20? Or do we really mean to exclude a lot of those parcels that are right at 20 acres?
It's a great question.
Yeah, that's good. That is a good question. This was, I think, from the current comprehensive plan, and we were trying to keep something similar to it. We did modify it slightly. So I mean, we were just trying to be true to the 1997 plan. We can certainly go larger than 20 acres, or we could say 20 acres or larger. Or we could get rid of the policy altogether. It was a 1997 policy that we were trying to be true to still.
I mean, I was just thinking, if we go out much further than we are today, we're going to be in those 20 acre.
Yeah.
On pretty much most annexations.
I think if anything, it's a question of, you know, do you want to require some sort of concept plan for lands coming in above a certain acreage?
I was not prepared to talk about that, but.
And just so you're aware, even if we, and I think you're already aware of this, even if we adopted this policy in the cop plan, we would then have to come back to you on a future date to talk about how to implement that into the development code.
Yeah, or what those concept plan requirements would be, actually.
So reading between the lines, Dawn, it probably doesn't matter?
Um, I would suggest keeping this policy, just so that there is some kind of intent of managing what comes in to the city, like having, so so that you have a concept plan or an understanding how the way it's going to be developed before it gets annexed. I think that's especially important when you're speaking about large tracts of land. So I would say the intent feels rather sound. And then in terms of the details of what that concept plan actually needs, or what those requirements are, that can be decided through development code.
And I apologize for erasing it earlier, but then I would recommend that it said 20 acres or five. I think it says over. It says over, but I would like to include that 20 acre threshold.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I'm looking around.
Well, I'm just asking why, why is so important?
Many of these parcels just outside of our town are 20 acres. They're right at that 20 acre limit, which means that policy would not apply if they're 21, it would.
Like how many parcels are we talking about?
I'm thinking of the ones down Bornstead. Those are all 20 acre minimums. They're 20, 40, 60. They were split up. They were set up on that kind of a scale, but that's what I was thinking of there. How many? That's a great question. I don't know.
I don't have a problem with it at all, just that it seems like people already got over 20 acres already in the policies. If you want to make it 20 plus, it seemed like it'd be insane.
Yeah, I'm just pulling down that.
So we could say required areas with 20 acres and above.
That one person's gonna be super pumped. Thank you. Let's do it.
Yeah, there is certainly a very strong fiscal component to this policy. Creating a community level concept plan or master plan or area plan with broad communication man is a very expensive process.
See, and the devil will be in the details in the development code if we decide to pursue this later on. What? Because this land would be outside of our jurisdiction technically. What would we require them to submit with the annexation, show that they've accomplished this concept plan?
And at this point, we're just putting a hook in, right? We can elaborate on.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Great, I'll make that, yeah. Any other questions or thoughts about any of the other policies?
I had a question on the police stuff at the end, 2.9, whether or not the we could add anything there. One of the concerns that we have, that I have, I guess, is just the when, when Clackamas County sheriff staffing is inadequate, they have vacant, vacant positions and stuff. What I thought of adding is coordinate with Clackamas County Sheriff to ensure that there's adequate law enforcement staffing for areas outside city limits to address needs beyond mutual aid agreements. Obviously, we have the responsibility for mutual aid. They help us, we help them. But we also don't want to be, you know, needing to staff up and then responding to a bunch of calls outside city limits that you know, didn't start in the city and, and all that. We want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think that's important. We ended up not including that just because it did. We also already say in policy 2.9, monitor and evaluate police, fire and emergency management resources to ensure levels. Service levels are commensurate with the city's population and maintain a high level of public health, safety and community preparedness.
It's, it's, I mean, it's referring to the city, not really outside areas, which is where Clackamas County would.
Yeah, I think, I think they could just set a policy at the, you know, the police department level or Tyler level that states what or level of involvement outside the city would be.
Okay, doesn't have to be in the company.
Yeah, I agree with that. Probably would be more of like a department or agency kind of work plan level detail.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it needs to be in the, well, hold on now. I really like your point. I, I do think it should be in our council goals. Let me revisit them, you know, midway through. That's, that's where I started. I don't think it should be in the comp plan, but I do think it should. I just wanted to not let your point sit out there without validation. I totally agree with that.
And 2.9 probably covers it for that purpose.
Yeah, for just the citywide services, I think. But I do agree with Council Sheldon's point about how that might be like an agency kind of, yeah, discussion.
Sure.
Yeah.
Easy.
Great. Any other thoughts or comments on that first section? Any questions? Okay. I will move along. So economic development. So this section, there are four goals, and I'll say a lot of the content here is aligned with your new economic development strategy. So we really wanted to ensure, ensure alignment between those two documents. There was a lot of work that went into that EDSP. I always forget these acronyms. So, so you'll see a lot of very similar language that you saw in the EDSP directly here. So we love when there's alignment and nothing conflicts and is reflective of new and current information. We updated a bit of terminology. We added a couple of additional partnerships. You'll see notes with Travel Oregon that was suggested by the Economic Development Committee. And.
Why, policy 1.1, why is Metro listed?
Um, because economic development strategies are typically supported by a number of various agencies and partners, and Metro is one of them. And whether, whether the city is, you know.
Well, it's fine. It's just, Metro specifically is called out. I, I'm just, I just have a lot of reservation with Metro.
Wants to put their word on one of our sheets.
I mean, they do fund projects, and those projects are sometimes led by other agencies that might have impacts in Sandy. So that maybe that's one way of looking at it, but we could certainly strike it if that does make you.
And I was gonna say the same thing. We could strike it because it says agencies such as, and then it's giving kind of an example list, so we can get rid of Metro. I don't have any problem with that. I think the statement's still the same, basically.
Right. One second, I just want to make sure I caught my edits here.
If Metro ever turns out to be a good organization, we could always include.
And you can always add it 30 years.
It would add that we do have a old relationship with Metro in this Clackenoma IGA. It's between city of Sandy, Clackamas County and Metro. So we do have, you know, an IGA that is with that entity. If we strike it, it's not going to change what we have in place, but just making the point that we do have a old.
Some people say that's not an enforced agreement.
Right.
I'm just glad you didn't put ODOT in there, so.
It's just spelled out. I did have a little question on, you know, it says ensure that Sandy has sufficient, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. Go. Oh, under, under one, it said in 1.5, ensure, ensure that Sandy's residents have access to healthcare, childcare, job training and support systems. So anytime you say, you know, shall and ensure and all that, it's like, not really our job. I mean, not, you know.
Yeah.
Definitely interest, promote policies that help Sandy residents. That's, I would change it to promote policies.
Yeah, I agree with you. I would actually say, though, I would say maybe drop the, promote the policies, but rather just say promote access to.
Definitely, yeah.
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 Are we at the goal two yet?
Uh, we, yes.
Okay, I wanted brew pubs.
Yeah, so we didn't want to spell out specific types of businesses necessarily, and just kind of identify the like umbrella of business types. So we did shy away from calling out those specific businesses, and I will note, though, that they are in your EDSP, which is an adopted component of the comp.
Okay, because I had, you know, I mean, the whole intent there is to, you know, promote tourism and all that. And so I said restaurants and brew pubs, hotel and other lodging options.
Yeah.
And recreational services. So, you know, I mean, you, you can spin any way, but I think it's helpful, like, you know, we only have one hotel. And that's it. And so you know, looking at that Troutdale confluence and all that, if we I don't know if you want to, you know, we don't have to spell out brew pubs, but the lodging options might be helpful.
Would there be any reason to emphasize like locally owned? And not, and not to say that we wouldn't want these industry types, but maybe we emphasize like a locally owned. But I also, people have different definitions of locally owned, too, is, is part of my problem. I always have problems with that statement.
Why do you, I mean, why say, what's your, there's some motivation behind that?
Oh, I just.
Don't think it's wrong.
No, yeah, no. Well, you know, me, I'm blunt, like, you know, rolling to Happy Valley and having beer these days, right? You're gonna be drinking at like Hop and Drops or somewhere like that. When I, and not that there's anything wrong with an establishment like that, but I'd rather try to get something that was more locally owned and cultural, you know.
But so that, yeah.
I'd rather get the old Bunsen, because people, we'd always say we want a brew pub, right? And the Bunsen brewer would be like, well, we are a brew pub, you know, we've been here for a long time. And I, I do think there needs to be some emphasizing that we want to provide a little extra support to a locally owned, again, definition.
Well, and I guess that's where I'm going. So like, it's like, if you look at like, I'll just use Dutch Brothers as an example, right? Business started. Right. And so I guess that's what I, where I'm going, like, because Frem, like Frem Brewing. Major beer establishment in the river, just expanded to Portland, was looking for a second, which we could have maybe.
That new Milwaukee spot is.
Yeah, yeah, in a group, yeah, so.
Does it really matter, though? I mean, if we're looking for a viable business that will stay together and become a good, solid business that will hire people and create traffic and tourism. So does it make a difference if it was locally specified or regionally specified?
Well, to answer your question to me, as somebody who brought this up, as a longer term guiding principle document. Sure, it certainly does, right? Like if you, depending on what like an urban renewal budget looks like in any 20-year window that we're looking at. If it's tight and you've got an economic development director that only has so much incentives to offer, I would want them to incentivize and offer those to a frame over a hop and drops, or, and I don't mean to, I'm not.
Right, you're not.
The biggest advantage, the biggest advantage when you go really local, depending on how local you find it, is you end up with supporting contracts, supporting services that tend to be local as well, local accountants, local banks, local, this, local.
But is there even a way, I guess now I look to you guys, like, back to this whole local problem. But is, have you seen best practices or other communities try to like define what that is and how do they do that?
Yeah, that's a really great, great question. I haven't come across that, just because I'm not as focused in economic development strategy work specifically, so I can't quite answer that. I've seen that language in cop plan policies before, certainly. I would say that like through the kind of outreach that we did, there was it was interesting, like the emphasis was also on small business, but also the emphasis was on like high paying jobs and like diversity of industry and things like that. So it's kind of interesting sentiments were echoed, and I almost feel like a lot of the economic development strategies you have sort of focus on yeah, on just promoting high paying jobs primarily, and then also supporting like both large and small commercial expansion. And it doesn't say anything. I, I, yeah, I don't know, maybe you're.
I do, I do think you bring up a good point, though, like what is considered. Yeah. Because my Dutch Brothers was, but now it's a New York Stock Exchange company. Is that really a local company anymore when anybody in the country can buy stock? I would argue no.
Right.
And if you want, if you want to get a bunch of beer in here, we can sample it all.
But I would also say, like, thinking about the sentiment of needing or wanting small, more local mom and pop shops. Probably because it feels like it adds maybe to the vitality of Main Street, or there's kind of this more neighborly connection. You're working with an individual, not a company. I don't know, I do, like, there is some language in here that feels like it maybe speaks to that a little bit. That might kind of respond to the desire for that term, but.
Yeah. All right. Well, people have heard me say it, so if there's opportunities, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, and I welcome any additional suggestions if you want to let that percolate for a little bit.
Okay, well, I would like to just include that other lodging options, you don't have to spell out a hotel and stuff.
Yeah, sure. That sounds good. Retail, restaurant, lodging and recreational services.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there's a strong desire from the council to uh wanna look into the definition of locally owned, we can absolutely do that and bring it back. With urban renewal policies or, or something like that, too.
Yeah.
I was just reading the six, the six goals for the, you know, for the development strategy, and. One of them points out, and it's more generalized and high level, and just says, invest in hospitality and place-based tourism. To make Sandy the most active and vibrant base camp for Mount, Mount Hood Adventure Areas, and that.
Perfect.
That's kind of the, the high end encompassing of what you're looking for without calling out individual things like. Brew pubs or hotels.
Would, would we turn aside anything that wasn't really gonna be in jobs and economics and all the other pieces that we've been talking about?
Do you, I can imagine.
We've had it really in the past, uh, we've, our difficulty is encouraging someone. Surely wouldn't wanna say, no, we think, because you are, fill in the blanks, so, like, somebody else. Especially if they were a organization.
I will say once in a while we do.
Well, sure.
Well, oh, okay, there are some.
I had actually a inquiry this morning about a drug and alcohol rehab center inside an existing S F R zone, so. Um, I would say once in a while we do, it's not often, though.
Back in the day, I remember we said no to a strip club, so, you know, it was sort of, assuming those are things that. We did.
We did, city did, yes.
We.
We did.
Also.
City did.
Yeah, the city really got into it, but there are things that we, you're right.
You're talking when I was a kid. Not like recently.
That was only fifteen years ago.
I mean, some, some, just to keep in mind, I mean, this is a plan, right, it's a plan, and, and some of the things that came up, and like, with the economic development was. To keep this broad on purpose, right? So, I mean, I know we like to sometimes get in weeds and start identifying things, but the point of this is to be broad, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I, I would say also, you know, your input is still quite valuable, and we wanna make sure that what is here is reflective of. The engagement, like that really robust engagement we did for a long time, and also all of the voices of the various stakeholders and partners that you have here in the city, so, thank you. Um, yeah, so I guess, any other thoughts or questions about uh the goal statement? So we worked through commercial and industrial. And infrastructure.
The infrastructure, did you have a, um. A four point four?
We had three uh policies there, um, two of which were uh identified by the economic development strategy.
Okay, and I might have seen it somewhere else, but what I added was ensure that infrastructure master plans and associated system valid charges and rate schedules. Are kept updated to reflect future expansion, repair and replacement needs. Is that listed somewhere else? I might have seen it somewhere else later.
Is that in another block?
Yeah, I think it is in the other block.
Or is that?
Are you, are you talking amendments to the plans? Is that what you're talking about? Or are you talking about reevaluating?
I, I'm just saying that the reason the word, the situation we are today is somewhat because we didn't keep our master plans updated. And, and even worse, we didn't update our S D Cs often enough to reflect the, the need, I mean.
You're not talking about the comp plan, then you're talking about. Master plans implemented to the comp plan.
There, maybe it's on that land use planning, uh. Period, okay, one, one point to per- periodically update city master plans to respond to current and future conditions and ensure alignment with comp plan. Okay, so I, I did see it again.
Yeah, and I think there was also that sentiment in this infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure.
The other thing I would add to that is, you know, periodically update the city master plans and the fee, and the fee schedules or whatever.
Yeah.
Help pay for it.
Okay, let's, when we get there.
Yes, add that.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, let's.
That's at the end, okay, uh.
And also reminder that this is, uh, just the goal is directly tied to infrastructure capacity to support employment specifically.
Okay, well, I mean.
Anywhere we can.
Yeah.
Pretty big deal around here.
Okay, any other questions on economic development?
Go into housing?
Yeah, let's go into housing.
Awesome.
Uh, okay, so some of the revisions here, um. We wanted to talk primary, we, refine the language, uh, I know that there were some comments about adding the use of the word density, high density, low density. Um, we focused on using language around balance of housing types, um, rather than calling out uh actual zones in the policy. Um, so that was some updated terminology, uh, we also simplified some of the policies, there's a couple that were fairly long. And then we also wanted to rem- remove some of the more normative language that was in those policy statements. And I know, Council Walker, that you had a number of edits and questions, and I'm happy to walk through those.
Well, you know, so, like, some of it is, you know, you talk about the, uh, for people to live and work in Sandy. And obviously, we have to really up our economic game and all those plans if we want everybody to work in Sandy, so. Uh, you know, I just said in or near Sandy, something like that, so, cause that's not a realistic goal, um. And, yeah, I'm fine with the balance densities.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, the other thing that, you know, if, if this is where the infrastructure does go for this part, then again, just. Ensure that private sector housing constructs infrastructure needed for their developments.
Yeah.
I mean, somehow. Make sure that we're.
So, I think policy one point six addresses kind of the S D C question they had earlier. And policy one point seven is about cost recovery related to housing.
You're saying one point six covers that?
One point six is basically saying coordinate capital improvement planning with housing planning to ensure infrastructure availability in residential land. So that's basically saying we had to prepare for sewer capacity availability and stuff like that, and then one point seven. Implement public-private development agreements to recover infrastructure costs when appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think somewhere in there we could be a little bit more. Clear with. You know, coordinate, I mean, the whole idea is who's paying for it. I mean, we can coordinate all we want, but we also have to kind of decide who's paying what, that's the, that's the crux of the whole thing, cause. I mean, that's the whole problem, what we're gonna be talking about later on, is that, you know, housing, 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 and yet no money to. To do all the stuff we're supposed to do with the infrastructure, so.
Which actually might be changing.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, as new legislation just recently passed, where there's a, a significant amount of funding that's gonna be. Made available to communities all over Oregon for infrastructure development.
But we're.
Never been enough.
Realistically, our bill is a hundred and thirty-five million for sewer and a hundred and thirty-six million for water, so two hundred.
Honestly, given the development moratorium that this community has been grappling with, I wouldn't be surprised if this city rises to the top for. So far now, but.
We were skunked.
This is my hope.
Well, yeah, you're, you're mouth to God's ears, but, you know, we were skunked at the last session.
Appreciate the optimism.
So, yeah, uh, so Ca- Kathleen, I think to your point, that's, wouldn't you find that what you're, what you're wanting, wouldn't you find that in the master plans? That information, to be more specific in a master plan. Um, I think that's helpful, yeah, but I think as far as a comp plan and, you know, kind of the big picture. What I've heard from everybody that I talked to is they want, you know, de- developers to pay their fair share, because they feel like to some extent. The reason we're in the situation today with the high fees is because we didn't make that clear. And so, having a so, some, you know, little mention somewhere in there to. I don't know how you word it, you can word it however you want to kind of just imply it, but, but, but coordinating capital improvement planning. Doesn't really.
I'll, I'll go ahead, I will go, uh, to me, one of the reasons why we're in the place we're at now is we did not plan. Get prepare ourselves for the eventuality of outgrowing our infrastructure needs, and I think that's crucial, that we look at those. In a periodic place, so that we don't get into the business of being far ahead of ourselves for our infrastructure. So I, I believe we need to keep that planning in mind and in the pieces as we go through this growth process.
I like that, Carl, how about coordinate capital improvement planning and funding?
Yeah, I, I do wanna see that we don't outgrow our funding side as well, I think if, we can plan our way all the way through this, but. Either developers pay for it, or our utility rates pay for it, somehow, we go after the. All of the different um grants and legislators' money that supposedly they'll give us, so. I can't, but I wanna see that we balance ourselves.
So what if we added coordinate capital improvement planning and funding?
Getting there.
Yeah.
You're getting there, so there's one element still missing, uh, and I apologize, I feel like I'm three and a half years into this job, and I'm a lawyer. Uh, coworker gave me a book to read, and I hate it, it's called Strong Cities, something he has. Yes, I hate the book because it's hard to argue, it's, so, I'm not going, and ninety-nine percent of what we have in this plan goes against everything this author says. But, on this one point, this may be an opportunity to kind of look at it different, the point is, when we look at cost in regards to infrastructures. Even in these goals, we do not look at anything beyond the acquisition cost, we're not looking at the cost to maintain, and that has to be a part of the model as we look forward. So it's the cost to build it and keep it, and. Uh, just summary rise, if just because we have the funding for the sewer and even if the legislature comes through. That's twenty years, and we're gonna be replacing it for thirty years, right? We don't have the means to. Do it, it's not a good deal. If we're going to build a new subdivision and build roads, and we can't, and the income, the taxable income from local properties isn't going to. Pay enough to maintain the roads they're already using, plus the new roads that are built.
Speak my language, Tom.
Right, so somehow we have to roll that total lifecycle cost into these goals and policies when we have consequences. If I'm agreeing with Laura, I gotta check that.
Well, you understand it, you're, you're talking about analyzing whether or not projects should be. Um, paid for in a way that we can afford it, rather than find a way, like, Kathleen was talking about, we got a couple hundred million dollars worth of. Infrastructure, we gotta figure out a way to pay for, maybe we don't wanna pay two hundred million, plus, we maybe we only wanna pay a hundred million plus. And that will determine what kind of projects we're gonna say yes to, is that what you're saying?
Well, we, we have this goal here, this talks about recover infrastructure costs when appropriate, normally, we're just thinking of the capital, the initial acquisition, right? We need to expand that to think about the division, plus the ongoing maintenance, that road, thirty years after we build it, it's gonna be cracked and.
Yeah.
Terrible, it's gonna need replacement, there will be no new subdivision to pay for, no new developer, no new S D C.
Although, so, one question, does policy one point five address any of that? The second thing I would say is that. The additional. Tax revenue and the additional utility rate payers are helping funding maintenance of our systems.
The old system. That's, so that's part of the, when you're doing your analysis, you have to look at that, you know, where, there will be new income generated from these investments, does that?
Is that enough?
Is that enough? That's the question, is it enough? And if it's not, it's not the right investment.
So does policy one point five assist with that?
No.
The thing about barriers or.
No, that's, that's identifying infrastructure capacity and costs, including redundancy of facilities. When determining what land can exist or.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm saying Paul's, oh, I'm sorry, from the urbanization section.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. We just knew you weren't looking at the one we were looking at.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Say, say which policy again?
It's uh, one point five under the urbanization section.
Up near the top. You could, but once again, I would love to see those, we always go to capital, I'd love to see the words total lifecycle or something of COVID.
Yeah.
Um, adding to those kinds of scoping, I think the.
Or funding plus, you know, maintenance.
In other words, describing, yeah.
Ongoing operational costs.
Whatever.
And asset management terms, it's always total lifecycle.
Yeah, can we work with Tyler to get the terminology right on those? Do you mind that Tyler, on those few policies?
Yeah, maybe focusing on revising policy one point five to reflect that lifecycle concept.
And then also policy.
Thank you.
One point six in the housing section. Is that correct?
One point six in the housing section.
Yeah, remember, they're not always right.
We'll get Tyler's input on that.
What, six? Okay, coordinate capital improvement, planning and funding with housing.
And then somehow getting something in there about ongoing maintenance. Is that correct?
Yeah, very much so, thank you.
Perfect.
You get all your questions, so I go.
Go ahead.
Alright, um, take a pause and go to me for a bit, uh, under housing, probably you'll know where we're at. Uh, two point two, uh, when I read this, I really struggled with the mixed use village plan designations. They said, for instance, Ivy twenty-six, other places. We, we've really not been able to incorporate that into our city at all. Uh, one situation out of what, a half dozen or so, and they just refused to.
I think there's like eight properties of that designation, so.
Right, but we've only got one of those eight then, I stand corrected on the number.
So we'll soon have more, and the reason why is Bull Run Terrace approved.
Yeah, that's.
Commercial in the village, and then also, as you'll remember, I think, I think you're aware of this. Uh, the apartments north of Barnstead Park will have commercial in them as well, that was a requirement.
Oh, I know where you're at, yes.
So we, we were saying those two villages, yeah, I agree with you, they haven't totally worked, but maintain those for now, the one up by Kelso and Bluff is policy. Two point three, get rid of that one altogether. That was our kind of thinking behind why we wrote those two policies.
That says reclassify versus the ones that, the one before says maintain that mixed use.
Yeah, so, what's the logic in maintaining something that doesn't work?
Those two developments, the only way for them to move forward is to have commercial development associated with both of them. So in those two cases, there will be more commercial at those two locations.
We, we would like to see that happen.
No, it's conditioned.
And, yeah, it's conditioned.
Development.
You, you cannot condition them to.
It is conditioned in those final orders for those two developments.
You think those will go through?
Well, if they don't have a commercial, then I won't give them a C above, correct? Cause they would be not complying with the intention.
Then the trick is to find somebody who would actually be a tenant in that business, that building. And, and I'm telling you, I, I.
But that's.
Doesn't seem to be possible at the moment, now, again, there are some building issues, except for Bornstead, I think the others have not been constructed, so. I get that part, so you're saying, if we construct it, they will come?
No, I'm saying, in order for Bull Run Terrace or the Bornstead Apartments to be constructed. They both have to build out commercial tenant space.
Got that part.
Now, whether, whether that tenant space takes two years or ten years to fill, is the same as in our general commercial zone, somebody could build a new strip mall. And they could all remain, like the one in Wood Village, that's just been sitting vacant for years now.
Right, right.
Um, so it could be something similar to that, we can't control what they're pricing their rents at, as you know.
You may be um, making a development uneconomical, if you decide, I don't know how expensive these guys are gonna be, but my mind's eye can see. Uh, some sort of fairly good sized commercial building, sitting there vacant, and, but would that be something we would require, I mean.
Potentially, but, but the flip side of that is if we didn't require the commercial, there'd be more housing at those two locations.
Well, that is a good thing.
But.
I think some people would argue this, some people.
Right, but if we, I guess, you know, first of all, it's, it's on the first floor, and so, you know, tons of housing, uh, units above it. And so the idea is, these are along Highway twenty-six and Highway two eleven, so putting it out of Kelso and Bluff and all that is kind of. You know, a losing proposition, but if you, you know, focus your commercial stuff on the highway frontages. You're, you know, as we grow. Coffee shop in there and something like that.
When, when I saw it, way back, unfortunately, I have to say that, cause I'm younger. But I saw that, when we did the comp plan before, that was a great idea, cause we were bringing the commercial to a local business, uh, business to residential. Though, driving, just walking over to the grocery store and all that, it just doesn't seem to work.
So the, when, when they did the transit master plan, what was that, during COVID, deep in COVID at some point? Three, four years ago. Uh, I do remember talking to the transit master plan folks, uh, that put that plan together, and they said that, you know, serving future commercial development. As, as Council Walker just said, on Highway twenty-six or Highway two eleven, you know, from a transit perspective too, makes a lot of sense, there was no.
Off the beaten path.
There's no planned transit routes in the transit master plan on Kelso and Bluff, so they, they even suggested during that planning process to remove that village. And that, I think that's what we're kind of following through these two policies.
Okay, so if you're thinking about downsizing the, except these spots, so the highway transportation makes some sense to it.
So bus routes will dictate where we're gonna cover these unit, these planned use developments.
So there, you know, planned use developments are these. So there, you know, planned use developments are these
Essentially the wrong criteria.
Well, it's, it's really not actually, cause villages typically in most cities are dependent on like transportation oriented development is what it's called, TODs or whatever the acronym is.
Okay.
So like, Oranco Station, let's just say that.
It's a great example.
The reason why that exists is because that's where the Maxxeril goes. So they built that pod or that village around.
A lot of the districts in Portland exist today because of Light Route.
Correct.
Sure.
So yeah, it, it's not the only reason.
Uh, a SAM route there or something seems so since we can follow.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the only reason. I think it's one of the reasons. The other reason is because those two sites are approved to have commercial development now. So I think it'd be odd to now remove the commercial and then they have an existing nonconformity.
Sorry.
Well, I'm not really sure that I'm completely on board with you. We have some time to shake this around. Not really? Why is that thrown out?
No.
We've got ten minutes.
Do I mean?
Operations have already been submitted.
More than just tonight.
I gotta find.
That's all I have. I need to pick it around a little bit. I'm really concerned about the economic viability of the locations.
Uh, no, further than that, they already have land use approval for commercial development at both of those locations.
Yeah.
You're not changing it.
No.
I mean, like I said, alternatively, if you decided to change it, what you're gonna get is more housing density, which I've heard from the councils, not close to other thing either. So I don't know if there's any real win in it. Like I think we're gonna have commercial at those two sites now at this point, which I think in the long term is a great thing.
I think if it works, it's a great thing. I, I like the idea. I like the back end of the nineties when we talked about it, but for the last twenty years, it's just not worked.
But it sounds like maybe it's actually just started to work. Maybe the market's changed in a, in a way where
Here, we just hammered away, hammered away, and now forcing them to do that.
Well, we conditioned it. So the other
Conditioned.
I don't think so. The, the use is required that they have to have commercial.
And that's not forced, okay?
That's how, that's how the entire element.
They could have chosen to build something. We're not, we're not
I do wanna make sure that that should coordinate capital improvement, planning and funding.
Yeah, I got that.
I got it. Yeah. And then going down to goal two, um. Uh, go three, um. On three point one, you've got consistent blah blah blah, uh, restricted affordable housing and middle income affordable housing and develop policies to reduce development barriers. Of course, I wanted to say, consider policies to reduce development barriers without transferring the cost of these developments to current cost burdened residences.
Yeah, I, um, so I think that's a great concept to discuss just with the general council is how you wanna navigate, um, stating development costs being taken, like being covered entirely by the market sector.
Yeah, I think we, we had actually talked about this internally as staff. This was one of the main things that we thought you guys and planning commission should have a discussion about for a few minutes tonight is whether we want to develop, cause I've heard mixed opinions on this, whether development pays for itself. Is that, isn't that what you're kind of suggesting with that policy?
I, I'm aware that it doesn't completely pay for itself, but it pays its fair share.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I mean, obviously didn't pay for all of Bell three sixty-second, we covered that. But it also met the needs of a wider population. So I'm not saying, you know, but, but I'm also saying that again, the reason that we're in the place we are is because we didn't charge developers enough to cover the costs that were needed to provide for those developments we had. So let's not make that mistake.
Please, for the rest of council, reread the line as, as it is, and then read how you want it to be.
Well, change develop, says develop policies to reduce development barriers, and I'm saying consider policies to reduce development barriers.
That's fine. I'll see it fundamentally changing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, and then without transferring the cost of these developments.
Under housing.
Okay, so change, three point one, change develop to consider policies to reduce development barriers without transferring the cost of these developments to current cost burdened residences.
Yeah, that's, I wanna agree to that on the lap. So, um, well, let's find a compromise here, um.
We could add the concept of just proportionality.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's my intent was proportionality. Yeah. But this is all about, you know, kind of what we're gonna go talk about later on too, is just this whole idea that we gotta identify and remove barriers to development. And there's no funding associated with it. So, so by doing that, and again, finding that we already have two hundred and seventy million dollars in a town of thirteen thousand people, which equates to like twenty-one thousand dollars a person. I did the math tonight. I'm just kind of concerned about transferring, you know, when, when we try to kind of provide policies that allow all this other affordable housing, we just move the turd into somebody else's pocket and those, you know, those people are already cost burdened or going to be cost burdened. So that's kind of where I, I just wanna make sure that we're not you know, when, when you, when you mandate all these policies that we have to remove or reduce barriers, which is costs, that's what they're talking about, then, you know, the cost, somebody has to pay for it, and who is that? So
I mean, go, can we?
I, I just wanna say this, I, I agree with you, Kathleen, one hundred percent. But does what Don talked about earlier kind of get at that point? Can address that properly? Does it, does it need to be elsewhere? I, I, I don't know the answer. I'm just gonna pose that question.
I'm was first all the time.
Yeah, I know, but I get to run the meeting. So that's actually my role here. So, so we'll go, we'll go Chris, and then we'll go Don, and then we'll go Carl.
I was gonna say too, I agree with you one hundred percent, Kathleen, about fair share and builders paying for their own and not putting cost burden on existing residents. Um, I totally disagree about adding that last phrase in there. Just wanted to put that out there. But I wanna ask you a question. Isn't that what we're doing with our SDC renewals? Aren't we, we're, we're raising them, we're monitoring them, we're doing them more frequently, we're at least we're putting into implementation through this plan that we go back and revisit that more often, because that is what the developers pay. And I just don't understand why we convol- we would need to convolute it with more language throughout the policy saying things about their fair share, when their fair share is gonna be determined by the SDC that they pay that we've already addressed in earlier.
Okay, well, I can, I can revise my thing to just say, change develop to consider and drop less, but I will just say this whole thing is talking about identify barriers to development. And so when you read through all the other stuff that I read through the last few days, what they mean by that is costs for infrastructure mostly. I mean, they talked about removing costs for parking lots and and transferring dens- doing density transfers, both of which we've already done, but you know.
Yeah, we gotta get Don in here.
Sorry.
So I think this section is all about complying with state, and I think it can be reworded to say we will need state requirements as best we can. And not, I don't think we should go one smidgen further than what the state mandates us to do, and, and I'm afraid that the way this phrase right now, it can be spirits going further than the state.
So we change develop to consider policies?
I actually wonder, like, I, I guess, I don't, I don't actually know. You might, you might be required to audit and establish policies to remove regulatory barriers through the HCS.
Great.
If we have to, we do.
Sorry, the HPS, yeah. So I, I, so I, so I'm sorry, maybe I'm walking back. I'm thinking through this a little bit more concisely, and I, I do think that adding the word consider might actually go against that, and maybe the way that it's written speaks to the polit- to the requirement and nothing more and nothing less.
That, Don? Well, I just, as some, as close as we can get it to the state requirement, that's what I prefer.
Brett, uh, Chris.
Uh, I'm inclined to agree on the side of getting it close to the state requirements, but I do think that we as a council have said several times, we were gonna encourage and help development by subsidizing, you look at three sixty-second, pretty big example, pretty current. So I think we will be doing some of that in the future. At least I would like to see some of that. Now, do we need to make sure that we can afford it? That we need to make sure that it's proportional? I, I think I agree with all those things.
So I think that is where council is. So that's why you, I think you heard council react the way, the manner in which we did to the end of the suggested line there, right? But then we all started really coalescing together where we said we didn't wanna go that far, but we understood the point being made that, right? And so I think we're, we're there. And if we're not rewatch this conversation, I think you'll find yourself there.
I think I'm following. I feel like we kind of went in a circle and then we kind of are back to it and responding to the state requirement and nothing more.
That's right.
I think Councilor Hopkins spoke to it very well when he said what goal three is trying to address. They spot on. That's exactly what it's trying to do. I don't think so. All right.
We have I actually do have a question.
Please, yes.
Being as broad as this is, this particular set of plans and what we've done, as we go through the process with the consider and all of these things, can they be narrowed down as they come further down to say the planning commission and the codes? Is that, will that affect any of that with the state legislature and how we deal with with that funding coming down the pipeline? As a broad picture, as it narrows further down closer to conclusion, is there a chance that council or planning commission would have a say to kind of adjust some of those things and, and how that goes? Yeah, I think that comes through in departmental work plans for sure. I mean, this, you know, these goals and policies set the framework for work planning and budgeting, um, over a long, long term. So yes.
Okay.
Great, last one. Uh, land use planning, um, so this is really stating broadly that you are maintaining a process and a policy framework for land use planning and you are, uh, you know, your policies are rooted in adequate factual base uh, for land use decisions and actions. So it speaks primarily to maintaining, um, or keeping your infrastructure plans updated, your master plans updated. Uh, regularly reviewing the comp plan at key intervals, um.
And her map updated, Kathleen.
Yeah, that's a great, I, I noticed that. That was a great action item, and that's actually a, a key implementation piece of the comprehensive plan is doing development code updates and zoning map updates, um. I would almost say that it, it almost doesn't feel like a policy because it's so action oriented, like that is a kind of something that's gonna come and go once you adopt the comp or, you know, once the comp plan is considered for adoption.
It's everybody goes though. I mean, if you're looking for something on the, on the ground someplace, it's the place to go. I mean, it's gotta be.
Yeah, certainly.
I, I did add, you know, that one last one that I added. I said, complete a review revision of the zoning allocations and map to ensure that zoning reflects the necessary balance housing densities, commercial and industrial lands to meet community needs and housing demand for a complete range of income levels.
Great planning or plan action item. So I think once you have your HPS, or even right after this process, that is something you do immediately next. I don't know if you wanna move, I guess, I, yeah, I, my, my thought is that you might not wanna memorialize that for twenty years.
Okay, well, it's weird because we did talk about changing the village designation, so I don't quite understand why we would change that in this, but not yeah, I mean, what other things we change, but yeah, it's just kind of a confusion there, treating things differently. Inconsistency. That said
I would also, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, you know, we could, so we do have some policies, one point, uh, two, um, hold on, one point three. Yeah, I mean, one point four could be periodically review and revise the development code.
Can I say periodically update comp plan policies and maps?
Um, so period, yeah, one point four periodically review and revise the development code. So just making sure that the development code aligns with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. What you could do is add a statement about the zoning, zoning regulation and just say development code and zoning regulation aligns with the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, I can see you don't wanna put the image of the map in the whole thing. I get that. I don't, I don't get that.
You've been away from that many times. How come?
Yeah.
What, what, what map are you talking about?
The zoning map, that, that, that actually gets used.
I don't want it referenced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we wanna reference?
Everybody goes to it.
I mean, we could reference it.
Yeah, we can certainly reference that. Yeah, I think we need to reference it. That's the thing.
The thing that I was harping on earlier in this process is un- unlike in nineteen ninety-seven, we don't, in nineteen ninety-seven, there was no measure forty-nine or measure thirty-seven types. That occurred in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Right.
So we don't, we don't want to wrap up the adoption of the comp plan with zoning map and comp plan map changes like they did in nineteen ninety-seven because the legal landscape is different than in nineteen ninety-seven. That said, we can certainly add map.
Kathleen, could we have some policy that just says, you know, in, ensure that the zoning map continues to reflect the needs?
Yeah, I mean, if you said one, on one point two, periodically update city master plans and maps to, and zoning map to respond to current and future conditions, ensure blah blah alignment. Just add it there, that's, that's a reference.
Yeah, we can definitely add the zoning map.
To
One point two.
One point two.
Under
Under land use planning. Same message.
Got it.
Okay. And then the, the part that is still confusing, and I guess we can talk about this when we get to the housing needs analysis, but you know, I don't have a clear understanding that, you know, we've got this thing and we've got the housing needs analysis later on, and how does all that change the map? And we, we're not gonna change the map yet, but
Well, it leads to policies that then come in front of council, that then we start looking, we, we're not gonna just unilaterally change the map, cause then we're gonna be in court. Cause we're gonna have takings and all these different things. So then we've, we've gotta start having policies that come down from the council level based off of these documents. And then we start tackling that map strategically based on our priorities.
Yeah, we might have willing landowners. I'm not saying any kind of, you know.
Right.
But the map is the consequence of the policies and the plans. It's not the other way around. Otherwise, like you say, we'd be in court every other day.
So the, there's one important thing I wanna clarify here. Changing the map, so either the comp plan map or the zoning map on properties that are not developed. I certainly agree that we might have willing landowners. Most wanna upzone, so I don't know how many willing landowners you're gonna have, but you might have some. And that's something we can pursue. Now, they can make a claim or taking claim or measure forty-nine claim, whatever they wanna do through court, certainly. Property that's already largely developed. I've also heard their, uh, comments about changing the zoning or the comprehensive plan designation to reflect what's actually built there now. I don't see how that benefits the city in any regard. I'll just be very honest. The property is already developed. If it's higher density because of like a planned unit development, or now because of House Bill two thousand and one through allowing duplexes, it kind of is what it is. Like, I don't know why we'd rezone that property.
Well, it isn't. That's my point is that if it was single family residential with, you know, less than six units per acre, now it's you know, ten or twelve units per acre, and we should be taking credit for that because that meets the, the standard for R one and not SFR. And so that's where I kinda get confused.
Except by legal.
And I get it, I get it. You're not even looking, you're not even looking at what the existing conditions are, which is another thing we'll talk about later, but but the purpose is, even if, well, I, I'm just trying to understand how we you, you know, the whole thing that we use for doing our job here is the zoning map. All this other stuff gets put on a shelf and pretty much, I mean, we kind of bring it out for you know, annexations and some stuff, and yeah, say, yep, that meets our general goal. It's cause most of it does. But the thing that really drives all our development in here is the zoning map. And so the idea that we're not even really looking at that, but we're doing all these number crunchings and stuff that are kind of eventually gonna possibly lead to changes. That's where I'm so confused about how this process works. It feels like black box.
Then you might think about it in different terms, in that the map really is just a better way to describe what the policies and the annexations and the decisions the council made. They, they aren't the other way around. The council, the council doesn't build the map and then try to figure it out by making and adjusting our policies. It's the other way around. It's just a way to describe it in a way that can be.
Done.
Good.
Real quick, is this a decision or a direction that we need to resolve right now, or is this resolved after we approve the comp plan? Cause if we can defer this.
Well, yeah, I mean, we need to. This is the comp.
We know.
It's not reading.
The, the reason I brought it up this, because I wanted to make sure that there was a general understanding that if we put the policy in here that will update the zoning map, I don't think we're ever gonna be in a place or in a legal position to wanna go through and reconfigure all the zoning in town to meet with the density.
But the policy wouldn't say that.
No, for sure. I'm just wanting, I just want to
Do we have to, so what, the policy is just very general, we're gonna look at it?
Right.
I, I agree. I was just trying to say, I, I hope we all understand this is what that would mean.
Kathleen, there's a different tax law on, on differentiating zones. Kelly, there's a different tax law on, on di- differentiating zones, right? For, whether you're SFR or industrial, commercial, there, there's different. As tax assessments that are made on the properties themselves. So it would change the tax rate for someone who currently owns a property that. We're asking them to change the development code and it could be negative or favorable depending upon which we change the zoning.
Correct. All right, anything else?
No, but I, I think I just wanna confirm that we're adding zoning maps after the word city master plans to basically reflect that, this conversation.
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that one. Yes, in terms of next steps and what to expect, uh, so thank you for working so hard and diligently through all the goals and policies for all the blocks. You've now completed and reviewed almost every piece of the comprehensive plan. So when I come back to you next, we'll have a complete document. Of the, the draft goals and policies and a variety of other things you've also seen, just compiled in one document. Um, so hopefully the adoption proceedings will, it'll all be familiar, uh, familiar content. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Uh, let's turn it back in here on seven fifteen.
The consent agenda.
I apply the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to our council meeting. Um, for normal, I will do a quick review of tonight's agenda before we get going. Um, I will, I call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get into proclamation, proclamations for Arbor Month twenty twenty four. We'll then get into public comment. Jeff, has anybody submitted either online or in person for tonight?
That's a nightmare.
All right, we have no response to previous as, um, city council public comments, so we'll get to the consent agenda. That has our city council meeting minutes from March eighteenth, Reg. twenty twenty four dash oh seven, which is tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for sewer projects. And Resolution twenty twenty four dash ten, tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for water projects. Under new business, we have an ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two, adoption of the economic opportunity analysis. As well as ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh three, which is the adoption of the housing capacity analysis. We'll then wrap up our evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. And then we have an executive session after we adjourn for the evening. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor President. Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Present.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. With that, are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll get into proclamation to this Arbor Month twenty twenty four. I will read it. Whereas the state of Oregon recognizes the month of April as Arbor Month. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water cut, heating. And cooling costs moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase pop, property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Most of the time. Come on, there's times, there's times. All right. And whereas the city of Sandy is now recognized as a tree city USA. By the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to expand its tree planting and stewardship practices. Now therefore I stand William Mayor of the city of Sandy and hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as Arbor Month in the city of Sandy. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Month and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Data this first day of May twenty twenty four, not April Fool's Day. All right, moving ahead, uh, are there uh, any public comment for this evening? None, correct?
That's correct.
All right, moving ahead to our consent agenda. Has our city council meeting minutes from March eighteenth. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven, tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for sewer projects. And Resolution twenty twenty four dash ten, tax exempt bond reimbursement declaration for water projects. Unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second. Uh, motion by Councilor Hockinson, second by Councilor Sheldon to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post naves, motion carries. Moving ahead to new business. We have ordinance twenty eight four dash oh two, the adoption of the economic opportunity analysis. Welcome, uh, Kelly, you want, you guys going on this?
Yeah, so my, so my comments on this one are gonna strictly be for the first public hearing. I'll have a little opening for the second public hearing as well. Um, so for the economic.
Hold on, shoot. And I'm in a public hearing. You gotta read. This one is set. Usually does. All right, hold on. You mean the part in caps?
The, the agenda?
I wasn't gonna say it.
Where?
Right there.
I don't know, you guys. All right. Go for this public hearing, uh, for ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two at seven twenty three P M. I'm calling for any extensions from the hearing body. Uh, any conflicts of interest? Kelly, you're back. All right.
Okay, so I'm just gonna have a very brief introduction on this public hearing. I'll have a slightly longer one on the. Housing capacity analysis, once we get to that public hearing here in a little while. Um, so on ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two. This is for the economic opportunities analysis, also known as an E O A. This is where we look at our economic development uh, opportunities. Uh, and strategies in the city of Sandy. Um, we also look closely at the economic development strategic plan as we talked about with the comp plan block three update. Uh, with that, on this one, what I'm gonna do is turn it over to. Are you gonna be, are you gonna be introducing, okay, Beth Goodman with Eco Northwest. We also have Nicole Underwood, also with Eco Northwest, so take it away.
Um, and should I share my screen?
Please.
Okay, hold on for a moment. I think I need to go into presentation mode, which I didn't pay attention to. And I use.
There's no W P D F on this, so you just have to show.
Oh, I have to show that?
Yeah.
All right. So pardon me for a moment. I apologize. Hello, I'm Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. Um. We are working with you on your, um, uh, the economic opportunities analysis. Uh, so I heard a lot of discussion in the last uh, session about wanting to comply with state requirements. So I know state requirements um, around economic opportunities analysis very, very well. As I've been doing these for the last nineteen years. And I don't know, I've done this in more than three dozen cities, um, uh, in, in different ways, um, asking about different state requirements. So we're just gonna walk through, um, what we've got in the economic opportunities analysis. This is part of the uh, comprehensive plan update, um, where you've just been talking about your. Your goals and your policies. This is one of the things I think we would term background reports. So it's a factual basis for you about economic development and your commercial and your industrial lands. Um, in the city, it would be adopted eventually into your comprehensive plan, I assume, as an appendix to it. And that way, when the city chooses to do its next ec, economic opportunities analysis, you can re, uh, remove that and adopt the new one. So you've got a new factual basis um, in your comprehensive plan very easily. So this fits in with all of that. Um, we've got uh, all these different um, logos on here to represent the fact that we're really looking at what's going on in the city of Sandy. And what we're presenting to you here is a relatively short, even though they seem very long, presentation that summarizes about a hundred. Pages of, of information. So there's a lot more information which, um, Nicole has over here if we have questions about it. So cities do an economic opportunities analysis and E O A. Um, in part to meet the legal requirements of statewide planning goal nine about the economy. Um, so updating your comprehensive plan, policies, um, so on and so forth. That's, that's all important. Understanding your existing conditions and forecasting future conditions to inform things like your economic development strategic plan. While this is coming in front of you a, a while after that was done, they were done simultaneously with each other. Um, looking at your land use policy. So if you want at some point to change your zoning or your comprehensive plan. Uh, 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 or on a particular piece of land, you know, if you have enough industrial or commercial land to meet the uh, needs that were identified. In your E O A. And so this can be used as a information in support of those kind of changes. And then in economic development, and a really important piece of economic development is coordination. So coordination amongst different stakeholder groups, amongst different businesses, with the city, um, with uh, your transit agencies. Et cetera, et cetera. This provides you information that you can use, um, in that coordination. And again, this is uh, planning for long-term growth. So we're looking at growth over the next twenty years. So, uh, very briefly, um, when we're here in December, we talked about the buildable lands inventory. In a little bit more detail, but what we did is we started with all of the land within the Sandy urban growth boundary. That is zoned for commercial, industrial or village commercial. We said all of that land, we're going to identify what of that land is developed, what is vacant or partially vacant. So developed could have within your existing zoning, um, more, um, development on it. So like if you have a five acre piece of land or a ten acre piece of land that has a small business on it, um, that is potentially partially vacant. We looked at your constraints, so things like uh, flood plain and floodway, steep slopes, landslide hazards. Um, the B P A easement that you've got out in the western part of town. Um, and we said, okay, if it's vacant and it's got one of those constraints on it, it's not considered buildable. So here we're showing your land that is vacant and unconstrained, um, and so that is buildable. In the next slide, what we're showing here is how much land do you have in each of these different comprehensive plan designations. Um, with their, their relative zoning designations under them. So you have a hundred and ninety one acres of unconstrained. Buildable, commercial or industrial land. Um, and a lot of that is in commercial, um, with a little bit in village commercial and then fifty four acres in industrial. So that's your base of existing land that is unconstrained and buildable. Before I go on, other questions?
Yeah, I, I think I know this one, but um, I, I wanna be sure. When you say, um. Vacant land or buildable land, uh, do you look at the quality of a house, for example, that is, say, you've got something. That is completely unusable, do you consider that a build, buildable piece of property or do you consider that? Developed?
Well, let's take this over into the commercial, um, discussion rather than housing, cause they're a little different from each other. But let's say you had a barger, a barber shack on a piece of land and that barber shack was worth at least ten thousand dollars according to the assessor's data. We consider that developed. Even if it's not a great, uh, shack, it's, it's, you know, falling down and that kind of thing, but it's got an assessed value of at least ten thousand dollars. We consider that developed.
Small percentage, big percentage, it'll make a difference.
No, it does not make a difference.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions? Okay. So then we looked at a whole lot of background data, um, of which we're showing very little. Um, but what we're showing here is all of your employment in Sandy, um, with uh, sectors that have two hundred or more employees. Um, so you've got other employment that is uh, not shown on here. And we're looking at the amount of employment in the bars and then the average wage in the little dashes. So your largest sector is retail and the average wage in retail is a little lower than the city average wage. And it's considerably lower than Clackamas County's average wage. Um, when you look at government and uh, manufacturing and wholesale sectors. They have less employment, but their um, wages are at Clackamas County average. So that's what we're looking at here. And I don't have in my head right now exactly how many, um, employees that we have in Sandy right now, but that's information that we've got. In the report, if anybody wants to ask any questions about that. Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, that's, that's specific individual wage, not household wage.
That is job wage. So if the, that includes saying Kelly's wage.
Per person.
It is per job. Yep.
So if you have two jobs, it's not aggregated.
Right. No, it is not. Okay, so based on all of this information, what we start looking at is, uh. How much covered employment is there in Sandy? Um, and then we adjust covered employment to total employment. Um, and the reason we do that is because covered employment only includes employment that is uh, covered by un, uh, un, uh. Unemployment insurance, sorry. And that doesn't include people like in the gig economy, um, people who work ten ninety nine, um, sole proprietors. There's a lot of people it doesn't include. So we adjust that up to total employment based on information, um, about Clackamas County, cause you can't get total employment for a city. You can only get covered employment. So in two thousand nineteen, there were about five thousand one hundred and fourteen total jobs in Sandy. And that's the base of which we began the forecast. Um, I won't go through all of the details about looking at the different, um, forecast rates. But we did look at a few different forecast rates, including the uh, historic employment growth rate of Sandy. Between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, and that was about one point eighty eight percent per year. We landed on the appropriate forecast for Sandy for employment growth would be growing at the same rate as population. And that's a one point nine percent growth. It's very close to Sandy's historical population, uh, sorry, historical employment growth rate. Um, it also happens to be what's called a safe harbor. So a safe harbor is something that if you use the assumption correctly, it cannot be challenged successfully in court. Um, so that's part of the reason that we use that safe harbor and the fact it's very close to what you grew historically. So we're looking at about twenty five hundred new jobs in Sandy between two thousand twenty three and forty three. And so the next question ends up being, um, how much land are, as those, are those jobs gonna be and what kind of sectors will they be in? And so what we assumed is, uh, those twenty five hundred new jobs. Um, they would continue to be mostly in uh, office and commercial services. Um, a little bit in retail services, retail, commercial, a little slower growth. Um, in the future for retail than you hadn't, uh, currently. So accounting for about nineteen and a half percent. Of Sandy's jobs, uh, new jobs in twenty forty three, um, rather than the current twenty four percent. And some of that's in respect to the fact that retail jobs, um, are. Uh, well, a lot of retail is going online. You've got some types of retail that'll certainly stay in, in person. So like building, uh. Building equipment, um, uh, wood and that kind of thing. You're not gonna order that, um, big hunks of wood from Amazon. Um, we assumed that government employment would grow a little bit less quickly than population. A lot of government employment is in fact schools, however. So you're still gonna see some growth in government employment. And that industrial employment would stay about the same percentage that it is currently. Um, so a little faster growth of office and commercial services and a little slower growth of retail and government.
Can I have a question? Do we have an, uh, clarity on that office and commercial service? Are those folks, you know, working from home or actually in offices?
Well, Sandy doesn't have a lot of office buildings. Um, so, so a lot of them are things like personal services, like banks and, and that kind of thing. Um, and what we know about work from home trends is that they've, they've begun to stabilize here, um, by twenty twenty three. And that you don't actually have a lot of your workforce, um, at least across the nation, um, uh, working from home full time. So a lot of people are, are either in the office or, or in the restaurant, um, or, or the bank, or they're hybrid. So we're not talking about a lot of, uh, we're not talking about office buildings for Sandy necessarily, but you might have in some cases, uh. Uh, you know, an office, like a medical office or some other type of office on your ground floor, um, and maybe in some cases you have housing over top of it. Okay. And so we take out government employment because government employment is just completely different than other types of uh, employment. It doesn't need the same type of land. Since so much of that government employment is in schools. Um, you do school planning in a whole different way than, than you uh, do uh, commercial and industrial planning. So in the um, second table here, the future employment land need, what it's showing is industrial, retail, uh, commercial. And office and commercial services. And we're assuming future densities, um, of those of employees per acre. So like for instance, industrial at about eight. So like for instance, industrial at about eight employees per acre. That reflects the fact that you've got things like self-storage that'll be maybe an employee per acre. Or, or an employee for every two acres, really low density of employment. And you'll also have manufacturers that, you know, might have eight or ten or, or twelve employees per acre. Sometimes you'll see a little bit higher in manufacturing. So it, it's an average, um, that we use, uh, in a lot of cities of similar size, um, uh, as Sandy. The retail, commercial and retail and office commercial are also typical employment densities that you see. In, uh, uh, you'll pardon me if I call Sandy a little bit suburban, um, but more, more suburban, um, areas. So you've often got a, a big, um, parking lot, um, along with a, a building. So something like your, your Dairy Marts, your seven elevens, they're going to have, uh, uh, lower employees per acre. Like fifteen employees per acre, because they're on little tiny pieces of land with big parking lots around them. So in any case, um, we, uh, get from there to net acres of land demand, a hundred and thirty-three acres. And then we go about accounting for land for rights of way. Because our buildable lands inventory, we, we do that in gross acres. So we have to account for lands of rightful way, um, also in our, um, forecast for, uh, new employment land. Um, and we did that based on Sandy's existing, um, percentages for rights of way. And so that's how we get to a hundred and fifty-four acres. There's a lot of stuff I just said. I'm not sure if anybody has questions that they want to ask.
Did you consider in the office and commercial services types of buildings that there's a trend now to move away from using them? Or maybe using them from remote? My office in particular used to have almost twenty agents working, real estate agents working in the office. Still have about that many, but I doubt that we have more than two or three in the office at any one time anymore.
You know, we, we didn't try to, uh, change employment densities in those ways. In part because we just don't have great information about how this is going to work out over the long term. Um, and we didn't want to underforecast, um, or dramatically overforecast, um, land demand.
Well, these would be considered conservative numbers.
These are, are relatively conservative numbers. And a lot of your, um, commercial services are things, I'm sorry, um, are things that, uh, that are things like restaurants, um, and, and gyms and that kind of thing, barber shops.
Use the numbers, yeah.
Chris, just to kind of tie things together with the economic development strategy. The verbiage is a little bit different from that on this page. Could you, for the council? Show the strategy, what, what the strategy was trying to accomplish over the next twenty years and how it correlates to the land that you've forecasted, because where I'm, where I'm missing a little bit is we had a heavy emphasis on industrial. But yet we've only allotted fifteen percent towards it. And I'm not saying the two mix and match, because you're, you're doing a forecast based off of actual and, 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 you know, previous growth. And, and how it picks forward, but if our goal is to focus on industrial. Then how do we weight that on what our, our needed expectation for acreages for that sector market?
Oh, no, I, I understand. You're asking the question of how do we match up your aspiration? With your reality, um, in, in all honesty. Getting to that is going to be a matter, um, I hate to bring up the, the issue of services, but it's going to be a matter of getting some of your industrial land served, um, and some of your industrial land is in, uh, this doesn't work the way I was hoping it would work. Is in areas that are, uh, that are unserved, um, and at the edge of your, uh, your city. So what can the city do about that? Well, um, for certain areas, if you wanted to, you could look at a, something like a U G B land swap. So moving some of that land out of the U G B, especially if you had a willing landowner. And moving land into the U G B that, uh, would be more easily served. Um, and I, uh, we had these discussions, but they were about a year ago, and so I don't want to point anywhere on the map. Kelly might have, uh, some, some things.
Totally okay. This, I just wanted you to say it again for my reference. I began a council one year, so I, but I was on planning commission before that, so I wanted to just hear what you had to say about that, that, how that matrix. Played into how you're forecasting our needs. For our reality.
Can you, can you go back to that graphic though, the, the table?
Uh, yes.
I, I think you will see, I, I believe from looking at this before I went on vacation, some, excuse me if I get this wrong, but I think. You know, for industrial development, I think we're anticipating that roughly, what is it, one-sixth? Of new job growth will be industrial job growth.
And it's a larger percentage of your new land. It's about a third for your land demand.
Correct. So, the, yeah, aspirationally speaking, we'd probably like that number to be higher than one-sixth of new jobs. Based on historic trends, I think it would be even less than that. So I think it is a, I mean, it is a slight increase as you can see with the total percentage.
The difficulty is that, um, generally speaking, in Oregon, we're industrial heavy here compared to a lot of other states. Um, and we're just not seeing, um, in the future, much growth in industrial proportionately. And Oregon actually, uh, has because of our, our statewide land use system. And because of our environmental policies, um, which allow us to have things like beautiful trees and that kind of thing. We're different than places like certain parts of Nevada. Where, uh, uh, they'll just, they'll take down a beaut, um, for a new industrial development. And so our competitiveness as a state is different because of that. We attract different types of businesses. We attract businesses that are attracted to our quality of life. Um, and that want to be near something like Mount Hood. I, I don't know that I'm pointing out Mount Hood, but that's what I'm pointing at. That, that only happens every once in a while. So, so the kind of businesses that you're going to get locating here are ones that want to be in the Northwest. Probably want to be in the Portland region, but don't actually want to be in Portland. Um, and that want the quality of life, um, that you have here. And that are okay with the kind of transportation connections that you have here. So you're not right on I five, so you're not going to get your, your big, uh, regional, um, distribution centers. Um, but somebody who wants to make a special product and wants to be in a place like Sandy, that's the kind of industrial. So, um, that you're going to get here. It's, it's hard to, um. Uh, pardon?
Giant solar farms.
Uh, uh, okay, you're too joking. Well, I'm not sure that that would be. I'm not sure that that would be the best use of your, your industrial land, but, um, but yeah, so giant solar farms and other parts of the.
So one thing I was going to mention, if, if we did see moratorium pending, I'll phrase it like that. If we did see a large increase in industrial land development. What we had prob, what I probably urged the council to do is redo the E O A. In like six to eight years, because we're getting more industrial than we were anticipating. And therefore we need to redo the E O A to prove that we need more industrial.
Because we don't know what we're, what we don't know, but I also like to believe that what we, what we go after will get, or at least most of it. And if we're going after that, the idealism in my mind is we'll need that space, but we don't need it right now. But, um, how long that takes, I'm, I'm uncertain, but I wanted to see how those numbers correlated and you did a wonderful job explaining it. Thank you.
Sure. So just clarity, so it says in here that our, uh, land sufficiency is, you know, we're deficit nine acres on the end. So is that, so is that something that isn't indicated? We need to change the plan or that we could change the plan?
You could. Commercial and industrial are like completely different than housing in this way. You're not required by the state to, um, uh, uh, address that deficit. In housing, you're required by the state to address any, any, uh, housing land deficits, but you're not for commercial industrial.
And because the deficit is so small on industrial and so large in commercial, it really begs the question to even bother. Until you, the need arises.
Well, and then there's the fact that commercial and industrial have an increasingly, uh, fine line between them. Um, and so sometimes you can do things that are production in appropriate places on commercial.
Yes, Keltzler Exner just said, ours is even more so than most cities. Our general commercial allows manufacturing and everything.
And so you're, you're industrial, you have light and medium and heavy or something like that. And so can you massage acres between those three subzones?
You don't have, uh, heavy industrial here, um, at least not, not that, uh, any that's in, uh, your buildable lands inventory.
We do have general commercial. So the industrial here is industrial park, light industrial and general industrial.
Well, it says heavy industrial forty-two acres.
Yeah, that's the general.
All under heavy.
Well, I'm on page, uh.
No, you, you, you do have a zone that's called heavy industrial, the, um, I three. Uh, and it may not allow what I would call.
It's all, it's all located outside of our current city limits. It's to the west of the Sibella acreage. And it is pretty constrained with hills and stuff.
That's like forty-two acres, so that's our biggest thing.
It is.
Just wondering if, you know, do we have the ability to kind of massage, you know, because we, I mean, a lot of the industrial that we had overall, you know, went to more commercial, you know, whippersnappers and stuff like that instead of being so, I'm just curious.
The movie theater is technically industrial and too.
What is?
The movie theater. Yeah.
I would say that you, you can change zones for industrial if you choose to. You'd want to make sure that, that you weren't putting the city in a position to have a measure forty-nine claim against it. So you were, were up zoning rather than down zoning. And presumably I would want you to have, I, I would think it was a good idea to have a, a willing man donor. So, thanks. So then going to, um, some of our conclusions here. We just talked about the typical site needs, um, for businesses that may locate in Sandy. And so most of your, uh, industrial target industries, industries are manufacturing. And generally speaking, you can get small scale manufacturing, um, industries that want to locate an existing building. Some may be willing to develop their own building, or they may be willing to locate in somebody else's development of a building. Your midsize industrial that's looking for sites of five to fifteen acres. And you could see some large manufacturing, um, where you're looking above fifteen acres. What we've heard from Business Oregon is a lot of the businesses that consider locating in Oregon for manufacturing. Need sites that are, uh, you know, five to, to fifteen acres, maybe occasionally higher. So your commercial, um, type businesses are things like your, your professional services, your technical services. When I, we started this, I couldn't shut up about Sandy Net. Because I want to live in Sandy and have Sandy Net, um, because wow, that's, that's pretty good internet service. Your services for visitors, your services for residents, they often have a pretty high overlap between those types of businesses. They're going to want, um, uh, space in an existing building, um, with multiple businesses, um, a lot of the time. Or, you know, maybe a space in an existing building that's dominated by one business. And, you know, you may need some, some one to five acre sites. If you were, say, to look at a, a motel or a hotel, it'd probably be, you know, closer to five acres rather than, uh, on the smaller side. So you've got sites that, that meet those kind of needs, um, in your existing, uh, your existing land base. So that's all we had on the E O A.
All right.
Thank you. So I will move ahead. Thank you so much for the presentation. I will move ahead to public testimony. Guidelines for those who wish to speak, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure that your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, there are three, uh, for those joining us in person, uh, this evening. Please raise your hand and indicate, uh, that you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder, uh, will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require that each person state their name and address for the record. All right, Jess, you want us to take us through this?
Yeah, Mayor, my, um, computer decided to freeze right now, so we're pivoting here.
Oh, well, I'm on.
Oh, thank you.
All right, guys, I can now, now look at the computer. If anyone wishes to testify, please use the raised hand button or dial star nine. I'm not seeing anyone. Does anyone here like to, uh, testify? All right, seeing nobody, I will now call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Yeah, so the staff recap would be, um, staff finds us the E O A to be an important component of helping support and amend the conference plan. So with that and with everything that's been, uh, put into the E O A based on all the facts that we know of and all the anticipated outcomes that we want to see. We think that it meets all the state requirements and we would, uh, recommend adoption of the E O A by ordinance.
Wonderful. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, there's a motion by Councilor Smallwood, an aggressive second by Councilor Exner. All those in favor, closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. With that, uh, discussion. He's great. I thank you to the members of our Economic Development Committee for all the hard work that they put in time and thank you for all of your work. It's staff time, this whole time. Appreciate everything. Um, all right, with that, I will call for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two.
Hey Mayor, as we pivot here, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two. An ordinance adopting the Economic Opportunity Analysis, E O A, as a supporting document to the City of Sandy's comprehensive plan.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
I make motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh two.
There are second.
Aggressively second.
Motion by, uh, Counselor, uh, Walker and another aggressive second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor of approving the first reading signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. I will now call for a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two.
Hey Mayor, this is an ordinance adopting the Economic Opportunity Analysis, E O A, as a supporting document to the City of Sandy's comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you for that. There are a motion, uh, to adopt the second reading. Make a motion that we adopt the second. There are second.
Aggressive of mine.
We have, uh, we have a motion by Counselor Sheldon to adopt the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two. The second by Counselor Smallwood, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. All right, good job, everybody. Moving ahead in the agenda, I will, um, open public hearing. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three at seven fifty-five P M. Is there any abstentions from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest? All right, Kelly, time for another staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I anticipate that there's going to be a little bit more conversation, uh, and potentially even some different views on our housing capacity analysis. As you're all aware of, you know, with recent legislation over the last three or four years. There's been a lot of emphasis put on by the legislature or governor's office. And then passed down to the state agencies to actually implement that legislation. So it's a little bit different than the E O A in the sense that I think there's a lot more discussion points around it at the state level. That's pretty much what our last governor, in my opinion, was primarily elected on. You know, with the, with the passing of House Bill two thousand and three. That requires that cities update their H C A every eight years and then also create and adopt an H P S, a housing production strategy. So that's going to be something that's going to be coming on the, the heels of this. Uh, the housing capacity analysis. What it also, what it also did is basically make us or force us to adopt housing policies to address affordable housing, homelessness. All these different sorts of issues that you've heard the state legislature and the governor speak to. Whether the H P S, which you'll be doing over the next year, year and a half, whether that will actually have many. Whether the H P S, which you'll be doing over the next year, year and a half, whether that will actually have many. Um, solutions or positive outcomes for affordable housing and homelessness, I don't know. Do I think there are some things that need to be adjust addressed and adjusted in how we do planning at the local level for those things? Certainly. Um, am I hundred percent confident that what the state's putting forth is gonna fix all those? I I don't think so. So I ju- I just want to be very clear that. I think some of the stuff the state's doing is good work. I think some of the state, the information and and the processing that the state's making us do is an overreach. To our local authority. I'm in total agreement with the council on that. Um, and you know, as a local planning director, it takes away some of my authority and some of my ability to kind of dictate how we grow as well. So I'm right there with you. That said, it's it's mandated, it's it's written in statute at this point. And as you know, with the more recent legislation um from just a month or two ago, um that was signed by the governor. There's now going to be an enforcement arm at the state level, so. Our requirement is to adopt an H C A by December of this year. And our requirement is to adopt an H P S by, I believe it's December of two thousand and twenty five. And if we don't comply with those deadlines, then then it's un- it's unknown what will happen. But that's the point of the new legislation with the enforcement arm. What I will say in all that is, I agree with. Some of the sentiment that's been voiced recently is that a lot of this is unfunded mandates. And so far, that's proven to be correct, as you guys pointed out in the block three update that we've applied for state funding. You would think with our sewer issues, we would have been bumped to the top. We have not received any funding as of yet for that. Or very little funding, I would say. What I can say is at least with the H C A and the H P S, the State of Oregon D L C D has awarded us two grants. In the total of about a hundred and five thousand dollars, so not not a lot of money when we're talking about infrastructure planning. But it is a lot of money for my budget. Personally, my budgets, I the planning budget, I think is just over a million dollars a year. Or a million dollars per biennium, so that is roughly um. You know, five percent over the overall budget. So for the planning budget to assume. That additional fifty thousand dollars twice for these two grant cycles, I don't know where that money would have come from. It wouldn't certainly come from fees and charges, because we're not collecting enough as it is. It might have come from a reallocation of the general fund from council. But I did want to let you know that while I agree that the majority of the thrust of what they're trying to do here is on mandated, is unfunded mandates. They have given us a few grants. I just want to remind everybody of that. In saying that, I, you know, I, as the recommendation says, and as I kind of was just pointing out with the E O A adoption is. The comprehensive plan is a legislative regulatory guidebook is how I kind of look at it for guiding growth and development, so that's why it's important to set those policies and goals. The H C A, just like the E O A, sets a lot of. The mechanisms that we use here. When we set our S D Cs, it's all based on growth popu- on growth projections. From this H C A document and the E O A. When we set policies to the goals, it's based on the same thing again, so. I'm not trying to persuade anybody to go forward with adoption of this tonight or not, but what I am saying is that. There's a lot of things kind of that are hinging on this document and the E O A. And with that, the only other thing I was gonna say is that, I think personally, you know, we came about Eco Northwest, they actually did. Our H, it was called at the time, um, was it not an H C A, what's? So they did our H and A, I think it was in two thousand and nine, I believe.
I thought it was more than two thousand and seven.
Okay, somewhere around there. Then I basically took a lot of what they did and did one in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we did the U G B expansion. We hadn't used Eco Northwest in a number of years when we hired three J consulting through a very robust. Solicitation process and evaluation process. Their sub consultant was Eco Northwest. Um, I've talked to other planning directors around the state, they're very respected and regarded as one of the premier Northwest um. Firms and doing these sorts of analysis, if not the premier. Um, and so I think for positioning us going forward with the moratorium, with future allocation around the moratorium. With trying to persuade the state legislature or D L C D. To give us some flexibility on some of the requirements around the H P S, I think it's real crucial. That we have a firm that is trusted by the state. And so. I I'll leave it with that and I'm gonna turn it over to Beth and Nicole.
Okay, so I'm gonna, first of all, tell you a a little bit about uh uh our experience with H C As and. Also talk a little bit about our uh role in developing the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, what's called the O N A. Which is what uh Kelly was just talking about, so. Like with the E O As, I've been doing this for about nineteen years. I've probably done closer to fifty um H C As for cities. Um, uh, since I I started this, so I know the state rules really well. Um, in developing the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, we were, we were originally hired back in like two thousand and nineteen. Um, to help um Oregon Housing and Community Services with that and help them develop a a methodology for that. And our our biggest role in all of this is getting good data, uh the the best available data, which is sometimes not good enough. Um, uh, and developing methodologies. Um, so if you think about what. Uh, our biases are in this is we want, we want the best available data. And as much as it can be, an understandable methodology um uh that that helps forecast. Future housing growth, um the the challenge was for every city um across Oregon. So um a regional housing needs analysis, um and uh. From my perspective, um what we're doing at this point in it is we're we're helping the state refine that methodology. Um, and then uh set things like uh uh information that would be used in the accountability framework. Where we're trying to, I I don't know how much we'll succeed, but trying to get common sense decisions made. About some of that, because some of the information that that some people want to use is is just not good quality information. Or uh some of the thinking about some of it um includes a whole other set of biases. So we're, we're trying to look at this partially as much as we can from a market point of view. Um, because we're at our hearts, we're an economics firm. Um, uh, and so we're looking at this from a a market point of view. My personal um role in this is I'm trying to make sure that whatever rules are developed. Um, are things that cities can actually do and that makes sense. Um, some of the conversations are. Are very interesting and and you know, more than a little anxiety provoking for me. Um, because I've worked for so many cities and I know how difficult this is um for you. Um, and I want to see things come out like uh funding for infrastructure. Um, uh, uh, one of the bills in the the last big legislative session was referred to as the Lorelei Bill. Lorelei is the president of our company, and it was all about ways to generate more funding for infrastructure. So how do you make this a less unfunded mandate? Um, uh, because cities just, they they can't afford to build all the affordable housing that's necessary. They can't afford to build all of the infrastructure that's necessary to support housing development. Um, we're very aware of this, um and we have worked with numerous cities trying to help raise those issues up. Um, where we can, including places like Hood River and Newport and um doing some of that kind of work right now uh with Metro. Um, so that that's the bias that I come to this with is what can we do that is commonsensical? And that meets the legislatures uh uh what they've put forth in policy. Um, so, so there's, there's where uh I would say we stand. So this is a housing needs analysis, housing capacity analysis under the existing rules. The new rules are going to be considerably different than that, but you won't have to deal with the new rules for another uh seven years or so. So we'll start with outcomes and the requirements of an H C A. We'll talk about your buildable lands inventory. Um, a little bit about housing market conditions and then how we do the forecast. Of uh new housing growth and land sufficiency. So I know that some of you have uh very specific questions and I hope. I will answer those questions or you will ask them again as we go throughout this. So even more um than in the E O A, you're trying to meet legal requirements of goal ten. So cities uh outside of Metro must update their H C A every eight years. Cities have to follow state rules when completing an H C A. Um, uh, which includes evaluating housing need by type and affordability level. Um, uh, in doing this, um, I would say we use uh, we use accepted state methodologies and safe harbors. To ensure that Sandy's compliant with legal requirements. And a lot of the time, um, in all honesty, when. Um, I've I've been questioned by D L C D staff about some of the methodologies in the past and they've said one thing and I've said, oh no, look at the rules. And they are like, oh yeah, the rules say this. I understand why you're doing this now. Um, so sometimes honestly, I know the rules better than some D L C D staff. Um, you're getting out of this a factual basis for your comprehensive plan, um so again. It's about a hundred, a hundred and ten page document, um that has a lot of information about existing conditions in Sandy. This PowerPoint, um, we are not giving you a hundred uh slide PowerPoint because you want to eventually get out of here this evening. But we're giving you a little more than we gave you back uh in December. Um, and so in the end, we're trying to determine whether Sandy has enough land to accommodate expected population and housing growth. The answer to that is yes, you do have enough land. The next question you'll have to answer in your housing production strategy is what do we do about meeting? Um, uh, housing needs at all income levels. Um, and of course, the city has one role um in that or really several different roles in that, but the city doesn't build housing. We'll get into all those complexities in the H C A, uh, the H P S sometime later, not tonight. Um, so we're not trying to answer those policy questions here. So some of the uh uh goal ten requirements are to inventory land planned for residential buildable uses. Um, to ensure that you have uh an adequate number of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels that are commensurate. With the financial capability of Oregon households, I would say of Sandy households in this specific. And allow for flexibility of housing location type and density. And as we'll talk about this, um Sandy's policies currently do allow for those. So this is a long uh piece about how you get to forecast housing needs. We start with the state official population forecast for scan Sandy. It's for your urban growth boundary. This is your, you're absolutely required to use that. From that, we transfer into the forecast number of units. We determine the type of units um that are likely to be affordable based on your market and demographic changes in Sandy. We'll talk a little bit about that and we estimate the number of units by needed of needed housing types.
Can I just, uh, one of my big questions is why the existing uh inventory of. Of the different densities isn't in in that, where, yes, start with what you have and then what do you need?
Um, so we, we do start with what you have in terms of acres of land. In the um housing capacity analysis, I think that's exhibit two. Shows you um all of the land that we start with, um. Um, that is zoned residentially, so we we look at all of that. So for instance, um, you've got a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty four acres in L D R. A little bit later, we narrow it down to just looking at buildable acres. We know that seventy nine percent of your existing housing stock is single family or single unit detached housing. Um, so we, we know all of those things and those are all in the H C A. But when we're forecasting need for for housing, we're we're forecasting need for housing for population growth. So the amount of growth that you're going to have in the future. So that's, that's the foundation, thank you, Nicole. Um, of of what we're looking at. So we we do look at the existing conditions and and how much. Land you have in different zones and in different plan designations, um and we've got that in the uh H C A document. So. So in any case, we go about um looking at future housing density based on what's currently allowed. And recent development densities and then looking at land need by zone, um. Uh, for the forecast of needed housing. We'll, we'll, we'll step through all of these, a lot of steps. Um, let's go down, hold on.
Can I just ask you a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
You said something, I just kept thinking. Maybe just, maybe this is a little simplistic, but if you're forecasting seven hundred new units in this one sector. Uh, whatever, we'll say call it high density, seven hundred new dwellings in in high density. You're looking at how much land we currently have available for high density.
For high density.
And then what land is needed for seven hundred more. Units, and then you're gonna tell us what the, what the drop off or overage amount is at that time.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's what we're doing.
You're gonna do that for all sectors, well.
All the different zones.
If you also have the convert, the general commercial where you're able to put all the residential, which is.
We're only allocating a little bit of residential there, I think. Well, let's, let's wait till we get down there.
Okay, but I'm, what I'm saying is that what we're experiencing is folks building tons of residential on our commercial land. So the fact that that's already happening and it's allowed to happen, but we don't take credit for it. That's where I I'm really confused about how we.
I think you do take credit for it, um, it's just that you, let let let's take care of that when we get there, um, you don't. You don't need more credit for that because you've got enough land of those types, so. So before we get to all of that, um. So cities are required to plan for needed housing and needed housing is a term of art. Um, uh, so it's a very specific uh uh definition here. And I'm not gonna read all of this, but it's these housing types. Um, some of these housing types we don't actually forecast separate need for, like government assisted housing. Um, or housing for agricultural workers. Because we're allowed not to make specific um uh forecasts for those housing types. Um, but uh, but the housing types in the first bullet are the ones that we're focusing on most. Folding in the manufactured and the mobile home part, uh, mobile homes also.
What kind of housing didn't make this list?
Yeah, there's, there's um second homes.
All housing is needed.
Yeah, pretty much all housing is needed housing. It's a big part of the conversation of, well, uh, what I think is complicated. In in the changes that will be coming up in in uh the O N A later. But trust me, you don't want a part of that. They've been in very long, confusing discussions. Um, so yes, all housing is needed housing at this point. So one of the important things to understand is the difference between housing need um and uh housing demand. Um, so when you think about housing demand, it's what the market is doing. Um, so uh, the market um on its own, private market developers, they want to build. A lot of uh uh single family detached housing, um, some of them want to build, um, uh, uh. What do you call it? A multi-family housing, that kind of thing. Um, and they're doing that at market rates, so at whatever rents that they can afford, you know, that they can get. And of course, the rents vary, um, you know, what you can uh uh buy housing for um in Sandy, say, for single family detached. Is different than Hood River, is different than Eugene, you know, so all of that. Housing need is based on the principle that a community's plan for housing should meet the. Needs of households at all income levels as required by goal ten. So we're talking um here, we're trying to talk, what is the housing market doing? What isn't the housing market doing um that is needed? So that's essentially what we're trying to get to here. And what do we do about the fact that the housing market um isn't doing certain things? Those are H P S policy issues. So we know that the housing market will certainly build housing, um, single family housing, um, that is uh. Uh, that costs, I I think somewhere over four or five hundred thousand dollars. I'm, I'm forgetting the the numbers right here. Um, uh, four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, um, and we know that that average monthly rents. Um, in Sandy are about one thousand eight hundred uh forty dollars. So that's what the housing market is doing. When we look at things like cost burden, that's describing housing need. And that's why this is an analysis that doesn't just look at what the housing market is doing on its own. It also looks at uh what it's not doing, what a economist would call market failure. So.
Would you consider Sandy's market a failure right now?
I think all Oregon housing markets are in some level of failure.
We have some very significant pressures on our housing at this point.
Oh, yeah.
A kinds of reasons, just our cap and availability and financing and all, all kinds of things.
Every single, every single um city I've worked in, in the last decade. Um, and and I just, I keep watching this just get more and more unaffordable um. Um, over the course of my career, um, and where I see things have gotten a little bit less bad is often um because of actions cities. Um, over the course of my career, um, and where I see things have gotten a little bit less bad is often, um, because of actions cities take. Um, have taken, you know, ten or fifteen years ago.
When you say affordable, you're talking about the lower income?
I'm talking about affordable at every income. So, you know, I have a, an income. Um, and I need housing that's affordable to me. Um, uh, somebody who, uh, is a retail worker, for instance, they need housing that's affordable to them. The housing market is not building that housing that's affordable to your retail workers.
Um, we, we don't seem to be having any trouble selling a house.
Uh, yeah, but, um, most people can't afford that house.
A hundred thousand dollar person a year salary, or you have two hundred thousand dollar a year salary. Those houses. Don't stay on the market.
They don't stay in the market because there's not enough of them, for one thing, and because you're so close to the Portland region.
So there's really no affordable housing.
Uh.
We could pay, we can sell them all.
Uh, well, there's, there's not enough housing that's affordable at lower incomes.
There you go. Now you're making it specific.
Yes.
But there, we can sell every house.
Right, but that's the, the whole slide, that's the difference between the housing need and what the market's demanding.
And that's, and that's. Whether you agree with it or not, that's the entire thrust of the legislation.
That's the entire thrust of goal ten.
Correct.
Yeah.
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 And it has been for a long time. It's just the legislature. Is now required housing production strategies and, and so on and so forth.
Through it.
All right, so I will move ahead. Uh, all right, so the buildable lands inventory. This is the same, uh, basic, um, idea as the, uh, buildable lands inventory for the, uh. For the E O A, we start with all land in all zones where housing can be built outright. We know that we're not going to assume that all land that is commercial. That will develop with housing, but we're starting with all of this so that we know how much land we've got all told. Um, we look at constraints, so things like the floodway and the, the, uh, uh, the B P A easement, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm sorry, can you go back that previous slide? Cause you know, we just had the, the earlier session that you sent through. With the, and it's a chicken and egg thing, but you know, the Bell, Calso Bluff, uh, uh, village and. Uh, was there another one, Kelly?
There's three currently.
Or instead.
Yeah, there's.
We, we cut, so we changed that, so that changed. Do we incorporate that now or how does that?
You'll, you haven't actually changed that yet.
Right.
Once you've changed it, when you do your next H C A, you'll incorporate that.
So the, the blue though defines the village plan designation, it doesn't define the village commercial designation. It's kind of confusing. That's how they did it in nineteen ninety-seven. So this big swath.
Big, big village.
This big swath. Is village. And in the center of it is commercial.
Yep.
Then it radiates outwards or it's supposed to with higher densities rating all the way up to the, that's how all these villages are set up. If you look at the call plan from ninety-seven and you look at our urban reserve area, that comes all the way out here, there's actually more villages out here, just like these. So this, this doesn't reflect commercial, this just reflects what they designated ninety-seven as a village area.
So a lot of that is residential.
Most, the majority of it is.
That's correct.
Yep, as we'll see in a, a few minutes. Okay, so I will go on. So we account for constraints the same as we did before. Um, and then what we do is we identify land that is vacant or partially vacant and that is unconstrained. So that's what we're, uh, we're looking at here on the map. Um, and then when we come down to this table. What we see is, uh, say in your low density, um, residential plan designation. You've got four hundred and twenty acres that are vacant and unconstrained. Um, two of them are in R one and the rest of them are in S F R. So when you look at the village plan designation, ninety-one acres is zoned R one. Eight acres is zoned R two. Uh, sixteen acres zoned R three, thirty-one zone S F R. And four that are vacant and unconstrained are C three, so your village commercial. So it's a small amount of your land, um, in, uh, the village. And so we also identify, uh, a hundred and twenty-eight acres of land that is, uh. Uh, vacant and unconstrained in your commercial, um, and you're gonna need to remind me a little bit later.
That. That general commercial, Kelly, looks kind of low. I mean, isn't like. Lundine's property, like a hundred and twenty acres?
It's probably got some pretty big constraints on it.
Uh, yeah, actually we just checked this out recently. I think the buildable portion, according to our, according to our G I S, uh, employee, I think is like eighty. No, wait, 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 I'm sorry. The entire area that was opened up. With Bell three and six, Bell and three sixty-second going through it was eighty-three acres. So Lundine, Skipper. Some other property that, the east of that, and that is because of the large constraints. The B P A is, and it takes out like. Half of the land owned by the skipper.
So you can see the B P A is.
Yeah, so this.
Really significant.
So this entire area shown in red, inside city limits and not including that, is like eighty-three acres. If you, it would be much larger without the constraint areas.
So. So that's the, the inventory of buildable land for, uh. For residential and we'll come back to how much commercial we're assuming of that commercial, we're assuming will develop. Um, it's a small proportion for housing. And then going on to the housing market overview very briefly. So the types of housing are, uh, consistent with the needed housing statute. So single family detached, single family attached, which is townhouses. Um, multi-family that are in two to four units per structure and multi-family that is five units or more per structure. Um, pardon me, sorry. Making Microsoft mad. So then we look at what's been going on in Sandy, um, with your existing housing stock. Um, and, uh, right here, we've got a housing mix in, uh, twenty twenty, um, as well as two thousand. And you see that seventy-nine percent of your existing housing is single family detached. And the rest is in the, the other housing types. When we look at housing type by tenure, you see that of course, most of your, uh. Uh, owner occupied housing is single family detached with some townhouses. And then when we look at renter occupied, it's just about split forty forty, um, with multi, uh, multi dwelling in it and single family detached. With the plexes and townhouses making up the remainder of it. So this is the kind of information we have about your existing housing stock. So that we understand what's, um, here in Sandy now. Um.
Some of our. Developments have a higher percentage of renters than others.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm finding that people like to buy to live as occupiers. In a, some of the developers, some of the developments that have high levels of rent.
Mm-hmm.
Is that reflected in here? So you almost get a, uh, if I'm thinking about it right, so an area that. Is, um, not exclusive of home, uh, homeowner occupier, but it's, it's. Specialized or, um, not as desirable. Is that what some of this is reflected of, or it's just you take the number and you throw it out there and it doesn't matter where it comes from?
Um, so this is all from census data, which is in response to surveys. So the census sends out surveys. So you know, if, uh, it doesn't know that I necessarily live in an area that's mostly single family detached. It just knows that I've responded that my house is single family detached. It doesn't know that across the street is a duplex, which is, uh, uh, renter occupied. Um, if the duplex, uh, folks were answering, then they, you know, it wouldn't know that they were in, uh, uh, a single family neighborhood. So.
Let me think about that one for a minute.
What I can say from living in several different areas of Sandy is some of your. Areas that are probably built in the seventies and eighties, more the ranch style houses. I lived in like Longview Estates, for example, off Tupper Road. Half of those houses are rentals and half are homeowner occupied. And what I was told by people that had been there since nineteen seventy-five is that people came in and bought them up at different time periods when the market was low. And now people are trying to purchase them and that they won't sell them to them.
Yeah, um, well, you don't generally have new single family, uh, detached housing that's built for rent or occupying. That happens as, uh, as, as, uh, investors buy the house or people choose to rent the house.
Sure, but as the houses become a little bit more deteriorated and.
Yep.
And they do that when you have renters in them, that creates the next door neighbor, not as desirable a purchase and so you end up to. In, in my mind, certain pieces of Sandy that are skewed towards renters. So even though a house may come up, it may become a.
We also have a lot of, I mean, that forty percent there for renters and stuff. A lot of this housing that is single family detached is on like a three thousand square foot lot. It's a small house on a very small lot.
That's true.
It meets or exceeds the R two densities, so. You know, it's not like they're huge sprawling, you know, single family homes on huge lots or.
I don't think this is making any normative judgment about, um, the size of the single family lots. The, the census just doesn't provide that kind of information.
Yeah, but a lot of the housing though, in like South Sandy, where I lived, like in Longview Estates and Bigby Court and off Sandy Heights, and then even on the other side of. Highway two eleven to the east, a lot of those lots are seventy-five hundred square feet.
The, yeah, the S F Rs, but all the, uh, you know, Warrenstead and Cascadia.
That's true.
Three thousand square feet. No, a lot of those are renters, so.
Yeah. That's the area I was thinking of. Cascadia is kind of our rental, so. But there are some seven, nineteen seventy-five houses that have larger lots and I know people are considering using the legislative. Um, density additions to put s- uh, additional housing in some of.
Duplexes and stuff.
Yeah, eighty.
Those things, um, I expect will happen in existing neighborhoods over time rather than all at once, so.
You have a fifty-year-old house, sometimes they aren't in very good shape and it's easier to say, oh, I'll just tear that down and put it. Do for a try and place of it, doesn't cost you as much to tear it down. You don't feel as bad about it, all that.
Okay, so I'm gonna take us on. So the median sales price, um, that, uh, we're working with here, um, at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, this is a little bit older data, but we know that sales prices have stopped going up. For the most part, as fast as they were over a few years, um.
I think it was five hundred and one last year.
Okay, um, so it's not any more affordable now, um.
Interest rates make a difference too, they.
Interest makes, make an enormous difference. Um, and again, we've got average asking rent in Sandy and this is based on CoStar data, um, so. Um, census data about rent and sales prices tends to be very poor and that's why we look at it, um, from other, uh, perspectives. Um, and so, uh, at about fifteen ninety-one and it does not include utilities. Uh, so then we look at things like cost burden. And a household is said to be cost burdened when they're paying thirty percent or more of their income on housing costs. And they're severely cost burdened when they're paying fifty percent or more of their income on housing costs. And you can see Sandy's rates of cost burden are right there with places like Estacada. Um, Oregon City, Troutdale, um, Happy Valley's got a lower percentage, Gresham's got a higher percentage. Um, when you look at renters, sixty percent of renters in Sandy are cost burdened. That's very similar to what we see around the state in many other communities and about twenty-three percent of owners are cost burdened. Um, and there's, there's a lot more data in the H C A.
This is a very skewed metric that is based off the median income for the area.
No, this is calculated on a per household basis, so.
Income's not a factor of cost burden?
It, it is, so.
So Gresham has a much lower. Average income than C.
It's, it's not calculated based on average income. What it's calculated based on is. Say I reply to my census data and I say my income, my household income is thus and such. And my monthly costs, my monthly housing costs, let's talk about rent, um, uh.
So it's individual and then add up.
Yeah, it's individual and the census, uh, adds them into different groups for us so that we know.
As long as you tell the truth.
Well, and as long as you know what you're saying, um.
So we're saying.
Yeah, but we have no alternative data to use. That's the only thing we can use at this point.
Okay, and so this is something that we'll be talking about more in the, um, housing production strategy, but we'll have it updated, um, for, for more recent data there. So each household has a different level of, uh, uh, of housing affordability. So if you look at a household that earns median family income for Clackamas County at a hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, that household can afford about two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars a month in monthly housing costs and rent. Or, um, in mortgage, um, including, um, selected utilities. Um, the estimate we've got there of what an affordable unit is, um, for the household is, is very much an estimate. Um, because as, um, interest rates went up so fast, a couple of years ago now, um. Uh, a household's buying power went down, um, equally fast. So at your median sales price in Sandy, a household has to earn about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Or a hundred and twenty-eight percent of, uh, uh, median family income. For your average monthly rent, when we add in two hundred and fifty dollars a month for utilities. You're looking at, um, about eighteen hundred dollars. So as you're looking at some of this, um, here, Nicole, I'll ask you to move it on in a few moments. But as you're, you're looking at this, your existing housing market. For, for newly built, single family housing and newly built townhouses is building as affordable, you know, at your upper income. You're getting some multi-family housing that's probably affordable, you know, between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of median family income. You're getting very little new housing that's affordable and built. Below eighty percent of median family income because the developer can't do it in a financially feasible way. Um, they just can't afford to, so you're not getting housing built there. And then below sixty percent of median family income. Um, that housing is what we call income restricted housing. The only people who are really about building that housing, um, uh, have, uh, government, um, funding. So like federal li-tac funds, that kind of thing in it. To go on to the next slide. Um, when we look at your percentage of households, about thirty percent of your households have income. That puts them in this, this very low income and extremely low income. Category, about twenty percent of your households have incomes that are in that, uh, high income category. And the rest are, are here in your, your, your low and your middle. This isn't an atypical distribution for cities in Oregon. Most cities have a fairly small share, like less than thirty percent of their households. Their, their existing households, um, in this income group. And a pretty big share down here, this is explaining the, the, uh, cost burden information we just saw. This is why people, um, are, are so cost burdened, there's just not enough. Housing that's affordable in these different income levels. And that is part of what the H P S and its actions. Um, which we'll be getting to, you know, in this next year, are trying to address. Um, for the sake of housing capacity analysis, um, we've provided the information. Um, it, it doesn't, uh, take us a lot farther in this part of the study.
It doesn't take into account that a lot of our residents and probably many places in Oregon are long-term residents who bought low. Now they're retired, they fall into lower income, but they're sitting on a heck of a lot of equity.
Um, well, I'm one of those households, about twenty-five years ago.
I'm not retired, but yeah, so same I did. My kids face this dynamic.
My colleagues, um, who's desperately trying to buy a house, sorry to out you.
Um, but it is kind of an interesting thing because it doesn't. There, the ones who live there are not a, work, right? We're paying a low mortgage.
And, or have finished paying our front mortgage.
Or have finished, right.
But when you look at the percent of households, um, that are, uh, are cost burdened and owners, it's much smaller. The ones who are cost burdened and owners without a mortgage, those are the people. That are potentially in very big trouble, um, or they could have a lot of equity they're, they're sitting on.
True.
Um, this doesn't take into account accumulated wealth, it also doesn't take into account accumulated debts.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's flawed in those ways, but it's the best available data that we have.
That's what I was just whispering a minute ago, is the, the huge degree of variability that a chart like this.
Yeah.
Doesn't include because.
Yeah.
That, that burden you just talked about, about people with debt or people with hidden wealth. Isn't, isn't transposed on that sheet and.
And you just can't get that information, um, uh. Yeah, I can barely get information about accumulated wealth at the national level, much less the state level.
Yeah, it's probably best indicated in foreclosures.
Yeah, I, I have four adult daughters and I arrange each of them in each of those quadrants and I'm like, no, that one's got a master's degree and she's still paying education. She can't even afford that, she's gotta come down here.
Yeah.
And then the other one who didn't go to college is, she can afford that, you know, and I'm looking at them going. It, it's so individually unique and I don't know how you could ever put that together on one chart and show it without having a thirty. You know, percentage point variability on both sides.
Now, our median income is ninety, this, I just Googled it, it's ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one.
Uh, that does not sound like your median household.
You show eighty-one in yours or.
How much did you show?
Uh, you'd have to look, um, in the report.
This was twenty twenty-two, so it's fairly recent.
So, well, we're also working with data that is, um, from five-year census data.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, so it's a little harder.
It's the eighty-one.
Eighty-one thousand. Eighty one thousand um is what we're showing. And so if you look at median family income, that's almost certainly going to be higher. Cause median household income is all households, regardless of whether people are related to each other.
Household.
Okay, so yep, um, uh eighty one thousand um in the uh, what year is that? Twenty sixteen to twenty twenty data, which was the most recent data that we could get at the time we were working on this, so. So I'm going to go on if that's okay, cause I have more talking to do. I know you're shocked. Um, all right, so then we go to the forecast. Um, so we start with the population forecast and here's a bunch of stuff about the population forecast requirements. And it, it basically boils down to an HCA has to use the uh population forecast. Um, for uh Clackamas County for the most recent forecast. Um, and that was done by Portland State University. Um, and so what we're seeing is, uh, let's see, twenty twenty three to forty three. We're looking at sixty three hundred new residents. Um, and in the next slide, we'll show you how we brought that down to or didn't take it down. But translated that into two thousand four hundred and twenty four new housing units. Some other assumptions that we use through this, um, and these are things to make it a little easier for the city. Are some safe harbor assumptions about persons per household.
Back up a little bit.
Yes.
Um, the forecast is for housing units, which includes rentals as well as.
Owners.
Yeah, I, I, I'm aware of the National Association of Realtors did a study and they say something around forty percent. Plus or minus, depends on all kinds of things, are people who will never own a house for all kinds of reasons.
That sounds reasonable at the national level.
Yeah, I, I would have no idea what it would be like in Sandy.
Um.
Some people.
Yeah.
Just don't want to be a renter or an owner. Like house roof repairs and.
Mm-hmm.
And water heaters and that kind of stuff, yeah, okay. But this includes both of those things.
That includes both.
Cause you can do the same thing to renters too, you could. And, and we are saying that those lower income people can't afford even a renter.
Um, that's certainly what we see, sixty percent of your renter households are cost burdened. Um, they're barely hanging on, some of them.
All right, yeah.
Okay, so we're using some assumptions about persons per household and about vacancy rate from the uh census. Um, and then we're also using safe harbors that allow the city not to do a separate forecast for government assisted housing. Or manufactured homes on lots. Um, uh, because uh, because the city doesn't have special requirements for those. Um, so here is how we translate that six thousand three hundred and fifty new residents. Um, into two thousand four hundred and twenty four new dwelling units. Um, we're using the average household size in Sandy of two point seven five. Now you could argue that that's going to go up. I could also argue that's going to go down. Um, I have no crystal ball. Um, I genuinely, if your uh population of seniors um increases a lot faster than um overall. Uh, uh, population growth, then that number is going to go down. Your population of um immigrants and Latino households especially, which have higher than average household sizes. Um, increases, which is also what we've been seeing in Oregon and in Sandy, that number is going to go up. So that's why we've chosen to stick with what it is currently. And that translates into uh two thousand three hundred and nine new occupied units. And then you need some housing units to be able to have um a little bit of vacancy rate. Um, so that, you know, people can move from house to house. Um, we've assumed a five percent vacancy rate. Um, based on census data and that takes us to the two thousand four hundred and twenty four new units. Are there any questions about that before I go on?
What's the existing vacancy rate for current?
I believe that it was actually five percent.
I think it is.
Which, um, it was over the two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty period. Um, that's, that's higher than I've seen in some communities. Some communities have seen one percent, which means their housing markets.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too much lower than it was.
No, 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 no.
We've been down to two percent.
Yeah.
Bubble up a little bit. It's all about affordability. We're certainly not above five percent in Sandy.
No. But that, that's increasing your, your forecast by a hundred and fifteen dwelling units. All right, and so when we think about the four, the factors that affect new housing need. Um, and are going to change, um, make twenty tw- forty three a little different than twenty twenty three, whatever year we're in here. Um, your aging population, um, so as you have a larger percentage of people who are older, you're going to have more. Um, smaller households, single person households, um, some two person households. Your growth in uh families with children, your growth in your Latino population. Um, and Sandy is seeing all of those things. If I'm remembering correctly, Sandy has a little more family households than, okay? Than Clackamas County average. Um, so, so that's, you know, pushing in, in, in different directions. But what you see for all of those groups um is increased housing concern, uh affordability concerns. Particularly for your millennials and your Gen Z's. Um, particularly for your um uh aging population that, that don't have accumulated we- uh wealth. So they don't own their own home, for instance. Um, and your housing prices have, just like they have across Oregon and across most of the nation. Um, housing prices are really increasing uh income growth, outpacing income growth. Um, and so the implication from this is about thinking about a broader range of housing type, type with wider price range. Um, than, than you currently have. And so that's how we get to this forecast by type of units. Um, so what we did is we really looked at what was done in the two thousand fifteen urbanization study. Um, and built off of that, and that's how we came to sixty percent of your new dwelling units would be single family detached. Um, seven percent would be townhouses, five percent would be duplexes. And the remaining twenty eight percent would be uh multi dwelling units, so about six hundred and seventy nine of those. Um, and so that's, that, that's what we see for the next twenty years.
Can you describe in eight years or seven years, just so the council's aware of it, what the ONA is going to require us?
Oh, sure, um.
Might as well let you know.
The Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, the ONA. My best guess is that. If you were doing this eight years from now, that. The requirements in the ONA would have you done, I don't know. Let's call it somewhere between thirty or forty percent of new housing would be single family detached, my best guess. Um, and then, um, it, it, cause it's going to tie housing growth much more tightly. To the types of units that are affordable, um, and using a very strict definition of affordability.
So I guess my point in that is that I'm glad we started the HNA or the HCA when we did, cause we're not tied to those rules right now. And if, you know, by the time we're doing it again in seven to eight years. We'll see what the legislation at that point looks like. It might be different than today.
There's no cities that are starting new HCAs at this point.
Correct, it's all paused.
The state has put a pause on any new HCAs and let the ones that are in uh process uh complete.
Okay, so what I'm trying to struggle with here is then. We're now allowing duplexes on all single family homes. We have zoning on the R one that allows for twenty uh units.
That's coming in just a slider too.
All right, well, it's going to tie back to this, so.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, okay.
Wouldn't be required to do that sixty percent. Since we have, since we're doing this um HCA, right? The, the legislator wouldn't see us and say, oh, you have sixty percent, we've already taken about only thirty percent, they won't do.
They, they, they won't hold you to the new rules.
And, and you're gonna predict that for how much surety in that compared to what they've been doing to us the last?
So they, they've already, so that's, that's why I sent in, so uh councillor, that's why I sent in the DLCD notice. And the end of twenty twenty three and that's. That's why we're required to adopt it by the end of twenty twenty four. So if we had waited and got into this gray area. There's the potential that we would have had to follow the ONA. We wanted to avoid that, that's why we noticed the state in twenty twenty three, and that's why we're now required to adopt it by this year. We didn't wa- I didn't want to put you in the predicament of adopting the ONA rules.
Got it.
So let me go on to the uh, the next piece. So this is about assumed housing densities. So, um, where we came up with these average net densities. Um, and I can talk about whichever uh zone you'd like. Um, but uh I will, I will do SFR under low density to start with. Um, we assumed an average net density of four point nine dwelling units per net acre. And that's based on uh what you uh currently allow. Um, in terms of uh maximum densities in that particular zone. Um, and assuming a small underbuild. So you currently allow a high of five point eight dwelling units per net acre in SFR. Um, and assuming that, that you, you're never going to get maximum efficiency. You're never going to get all your lots built out at maximum efficiency. So we assumed uh like uh fifteen percent underbuild, so fifteen percent inefficiency. Cause your, your lots aren't all, if this was a square, they aren't all square, some of them are kind of, you know, that kind of shape. I can't do any of that, so you'll have a little bit of underbuild. Now, you can get duplexes built on that and I, I, I'm going to need to defer to Kelly some. Uh, uh, about some of the questions here about why aren't we assuming that all of this builds out with duplexes? Um, uh, we're assuming that, that we're using the uh, the uh maximum density for a lot. Um, of five point eight.
Yeah, I mean, I, based on what we're seeing out there, Hold Homes is building thirty seven lots, not a single one's a duplex. Tom Worth is building a nine lot subdivision, they're all duplexes. Jillbury Metals in Jillbury Ridge, there's twenty nine lots combined, two are going to be duplexes, the other twenty seven are going to be single family homes. Uh, Sandy, Sandy Woods is going to be forty three, Born Said. He is, is going to be forty three and I've been told there's just going to be a few duplexes in age, so I don't, I don't have any. Data or anything to show that it's going to be all duplexes out there. I don't think, I don't think the market would bear that. And what percentage it's going to be, I think it's too early in the House Bill two thousand one game to know. I don't, I don't have enough to.
And I think the market is, you know, people do want single family homes. Um, but let's go to the R one and the R two, because on those, that's where, again, the developers. You know, my experience in thirty eight years here in Sandy is. It's actually is over the four point nine. They, you know, what we say is five point eight units per acre and they have. Built up to that maximum because they could.
And so the maximum in R two that we're using is fourteen dwelling units an acre and we're assuming a ten percent underbuild. So just a small underbuild.
But what I was, but I've told is that we, we allow twenty eight units per acre.
No, I, I've never said that. By, by, by math, it could allow that, but. By math, I, I've told you guys it could allow that, but based on Tom Worth subdivision, which is exactly an acre. He's building nine duplexes, so that's eighteen units. I've yet seen a case where you can build twenty eight.
Townhomes or triplexes or whatever that on, and they can on the, on the meat, on the R two. They can do tri or quad, whatever it is, so they can build a lot more than. Uh. Fourteen units.
And so what you could say, um, based on this, um, is that we're. I, I, I wouldn't call this necessarily a conservative um projection um of, of density. Um, but you could get more housing than we're talking about. Um, but as we get to the, the end of this in just a couple of slides, you'll see that, that you don't have an unmet need. And so it doesn't.
Doesn't matter, right?
It, well, it. I mean, it, it matters, yeah, um, but it, it doesn't matter to the, the end result.
Right.
Of the study.
The, the other thing to keep in mind too is if we. If we show through this document that, that there's a really large, so if you go back at a slide. We're saying, what, how many are we saying are going to be flexes? I've just.
We're saying a hundred twenty one.
If we want to make the argument that. This number is really going to be, let's just say five hundred. Where's that going to come from?
You'd be forecasting.
Basically forecasting that we're going to have less single family home growth demand. And we're going to have more duplex growth.
Or, or it could come, I mean, the, the, the apartments, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
No, but, but councillor, what you were saying is the SFR and the R two, whereas that's all, that's where you're going to get single family detached. Right, you're saying a lot of that's going to be duplexes.
R one, R.
This sixty percent is going to go down to forty or fifty is what's going to happen with this.
R two is higher, high enough density, you don't have as much, that's where you have your townhomes in your.
I will say that you, you just don't have much land that's vacant in R two.
So my point is, is if we want to say more is going to be developed as duplexes, we could certainly say that. But all we're, all we're then saying in return is that less is going to be single family detached.
Let me ask a clarifying question there, Kelly. What I've been told was that because of, you know, we have, uh, we had fourteen units. It used to be fourteen units on R two and if it's duplexes, it could be twenty eight, right?
Hypothetically speaking, I think you're correct, but I don't think it's practical.
Right, mathematically.
Mathematically, yes, correct, correct.
What if they say, well, instead I don't want to do duplexes, I want to do quadplexes or something like that? Can they still do mathematically twenty eight?
No, so the only thing that, the only thing that can double it is duplexes by House Bill two thousand one. Isn't that correct?
Something that you'd have to allow.
Correct. And so.
Just duplexes, not.
And so when we, yeah, and you, the council could have, when we adopted two, uh, House Bill two thousand one, we could have, and the state was pushing for us. To adopt triplexes and fourplexes, but because we're not over a population of twenty five thousand, the only thing we had to adopt was duplexes, if I recall.
And so you're saying it can be twenty eight mathematically duplexes, but nothing else.
That's correct.
Everything else would go back to the fourteen units per acre.
That's correct.
Okay.
But you gotta go back to mathematically, that's true, but.
You guys, I've just sat through too many times we've argued this, we just. This conclusion diminishes the, the necessity of these discussions, yeah.
And what I, what I will say though, I, I, I respect that mayor and I won't belabor this. But I would, the only thing I would say in addition to that is we're going to have a lot more discussions around this point and around things like this when we go through the HPS process.
Good.
I know we're all looking forward to that.
Okay, so I'm going to take us on, cause I don't want Mr. Mayor to kick us out. So what we do is we take, well, all right, so we went from the net density assumptions. Looked at land for rights of way and this is be, based on existing percent of land in rights of way. And created gross density assumptions, so basically instead of being able to get four point nine dwelling units an acre in SFR. When you account for twenty five percent of your land in rights of way, you can get three point seven. Um, dwelling in its acre, cause you have to have land for roads. So the gross acres is, the gross uh rights of way are what's carrying over to here. So on your four hundred and eighteen acres at three point seven dwelling units per gross acre. That's one thousand five hundred and forty five um units of capacity. So the places where you just don't have a whole lot of buildable land, like your R one in low density, your R three, you have almost none. Um, and uh your R two in Village, um, your R three in high density, frankly, that's not a lot. And here we assumed nineteen um acres of land in commercial would be developable. And I think that was based on uh fifteen percent of um housing locating there. Now, you could have a whole bunch more of your housing locate in commercial, um, especially your multifamily housing. Um, and that just means the fact that you don't have a lot of R three. Isn't much of a problem, you know, you know, um, um, so, okay. Um, as we get to the, the next slide, what we're showing you is you've got enough land. In all of these uh zones to accommodate your expected growth. Um, and so the answer is you don't have to. You, you're not required to rezone any land um to, to meet your housing needs analysis.
Can I clap?
Uh, yeah.
And that's the good point, right?
That's, yes.
Yes.
Can, can I get one question? And I need to answer it now, but just going back to that one slide, uh. Um, whatever, let's see, right there, no, one more back.
Is it the zoning thing with the?
The two, yeah, no, neck.
That's slide twenty eight.
Twenty eight, yeah, and it's not something I need answered now, but you've got two, see how you have two R three zones there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so if somebody could just explain me later, why we have R three in medium density?
I assume that that.
There was an error, I think there's an error, I think we've talked about, yeah, there's a, I'm pretty sure there's an error where. There was an error, I think there's an error, I think we've talked about, yeah, there's a, I'm pretty sure there's an error where.
Just wanted to kind of understand that.
You've got less than, less than a tenth of an acre.
Yeah, it's, it's just like a tenth of an acre that.
Little tiny bit of land.
Can set or is, the comp plan designation shows it as R two, but the zoning map shows it as R three. That's what's going on there.
Yeah, so it's, it's a very minor amount. Um, those kind of um issues happen over time.
I would say it's a mapping error, probably.
I didn't really, I thought I was looking at the fourteen point six and thinking that was any.
No, it's saying one, one unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, one unit.
The message is we got lots.
So the end result is you've got enough land, when we step into your housing production strategy, there can be discussions of do we want to rezone land? Um, but there doesn't have to be discussions. Um, where you've got the least amount of land is R two. And so I pose the question for you, or I will eventually, is that something you want to rezone um more land for? The answer can be no, that's not some, not something we want to do, and that's perfectly fine. My job is to ask the questions, that's all.
All right.
And I'm not asking that question right now.
Well, thank you so much for the staff report. Uh, moving ahead to public testimony, here's the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition, someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record in this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email the materials to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Uh, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and indicate that you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules to require each person to state their name and address for the record. I'm now calling for testimony on the proposed ordinance.
Mayor, looking in the room, not seeing any hands, taking a look on Zoom here. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right. Uh, well, with that, I will now call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Uh, staff and the planning commission also, because I, and I forgot to mention this with the OA, but this they go before the planning commission, they recommended approval. Uh, staff also recommends approval, and we believe it adheres to Oregon. Uh, the House Bills and also ORS, we've also given a copy to DLCD, who's the state agency that would give us any potential red flags for issues they're seeing with the HCA, and I have not heard any issues that they've seen. So we think it meets all the statutory requirements, and we recommend adoption.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, second.
A motion by councillor Hockinson and a second by councillor Exner to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays. Uh, we're carrying clothes at nine at one P M. Uh, discussion? All right, I'll call first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three.
Hey, mayor, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance adopting the housing capacity analysis, HCA, as a supporting document to the City of Sandy's comprehensive plan.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
I move that we approve the first reading.
Second. Motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Hockinson to approve the first reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nays. Motion carries, uh, second reading, please.
Hey, mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance adopting the housing capacity analysis, HCA, as a supporting document to the City of Sandy's comprehensive plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the second.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by councillor Smallwood and a second by councillor Meaton to adopt the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays. Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, really huge, thank you for dealing with.
You're very welcome.
Oh, no, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Great work, thank you. All right, back to the agenda. Report from the same manager.
Thank you, mayor, um, I'll be quick so we can um get to the exec session here shortly. Uh, but I wanted to take just a brief moment to introduce interim police chief Kim Yamashita, I know most of you know her, and I think everyone that didn't know her shook hands and had introductions before the meeting.
Wow.
Just wanted to say a quick thank you to Kim for chief, for uh getting here and um helping lead the department on an interim basis right now, and if you have questions or want to have coffee with her, you know how to reach her.
I think she said she'd been missing these meetings, and she's really happy to be back here.
Yeah.
You can tell, right? Um, uh, let's see, we have, we received two um responses to the RFP for Sandy Net Master Plan. One of them was wildly outside of the budget and far too um not workable. Exactly, so we have one that's uh viable, one within budget, um Greg and and our legal team are working through contract negotiations with that right now, but we're excited to be able to get that project kicked off in the near future and have a final report um by the end of the year. Have new computers that are being ordered for the seven of you. These ones are very old age and some of you are having issues.
Survived COVID.
Yeah, what's that?
The computer survived COVID.
They survived COVID and uh, yeah, it's time to replace them, so those will probably be a couple of weeks before we get them um in-house and outfitted for the needs of the council, but they're uh on order and we're working through that. And then just a reminder that this coming Saturday, we have the Cedar Creek uh Trail Grand Opening at noon, April sixth.
Oh, that's right, Sunday first of all.
That's all I've got there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Don.
I think I'll just pass for today.
Thank you, Carl.
Oh, I'm going to say it because I I just about dived into it, and um I've talked about this junction between Proctor and mining over and over again, about the big rock, and now it's just a hole about this bidding. So I dived around that this evening, but I hang around there, so. Really, I think that's ours now, right? And the other thing is, is they leave already? Shall they laugh? Uh, I want to compliment Chris and the the new uh code enforcement guy, I'm just those coverage cans against the side of a red apple or gong on, and they're inside a uh fenced in area, just, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Pass.
Rich.
Pass.
All right. I was just going to mention the the park, so we're all good, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, nothing.
Great. Chris.
Sorry, I just have one question. Why was the department manager for economic development out here during the uh economic um analysis? That is he on vacation or something?
Uh, I don't have a particular answer for you on that one, council.
Okay. Just just courage. Hmm, thank you.
Um, for me, I'll see everybody on Saturday at the ribbon cutting and um just I I noticed there was a nice little, I mentioned councillor Exner was there, a nice little um uh sunrise service on Easter at John Tree uh viewpoint, and just, I mean, that's our uh it's our gathering spot, right? I know councillor Walker brings up a lot, the improvements and hope hoped improvements there, cameras and landscaping, signage, but uh so important, I mean, that's uh like I was out of town, but I saw it, and I was like, well, shoot, why am I not in town? That would have been awesome. Uh, that really is like one of the greatest spots of our community, so we need to take really good care of it, so. Uh, with that, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.